During the hour, in the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Zoom webinar for our remote participation policy, B E D J A. The following ten members, although right now we might only have nine members, are in attendance via Zoom. Diane Bound, Cara Cook, Adam Klein, Amy Christian-Burty, John Peterson, Nora Shine, Angie So, Yevan Wang, and myself. Did Beth successfully list everybody? I wasn't even looking at the screen. I believe Evelyn Abaya will be joining us. Public participation is possible via the Zoom link or call-in phone number. Our school committee meetings are also livestreamed on Acton TV's YouTube channel, although public participation is not possible with that option. The links and phone number are found on the posted agenda on the abschools.org calendar. This meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on Acton TV's website at actontv.org. For our remote policy, all votes will be done by roll call. I will call each member's name and they will state how they vote. Thank you for joining us. And there is Evelyn. Certainly, we have everybody. Welcome, Evelyn.
Welcome. You may see I'm younger. What? I'm gonna run down to get a glass of water or something. I've been like on Zoom meetings since 6:00 AM this morning. Let me get your water.
Go right ahead. Well, before I do my formal welcome, I'd like to welcome high school student representative, Rick Mazungar. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yeah, you pronounced it correctly, yeah.
Okay, great. I wanted to welcome Rick. We only have one high school rep this year, but we are lucky to have him. Um, Rick, I don't know if you'd just like to take a second to introduce yourself to the committee and to the people who are watching?
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Rick. I'm a high school sophomore. Uh, I like to do a lot of things in my free time. I fence, I do debate, um, and I participate in science and math competitions. So hopefully, I can try to convey a diverse expect, like, a diverse viewpoint for the high school students. And over the course of this year, I'm gonna try to convey the thoughts of myself and my peers to the school committee to really give you guys our opinion of what's going on at the time.
Um, great. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. It's a, it's a big responsibility on top of, uh, schoolwork and all the other activities that you do, so we appreciate your interest in what we do here, and we look forward to hearing updates from you as the school year goes on. Um, thanks for coming. So, uh-
Rick just tested. If I can just ask Rick one quick question. Where are you in Acton? Because it doesn't look like that out my window right now.
Um, yeah. Um, I, I live in Boxboro, but it still doesn't look like my background, but-
Oh, that, that's why it's, it's sunny and, and bright out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's exactly how it looks outside my window, too.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Rick.
Beautiful and sunny in Boxboro. Rick, thanks for joining us tonight. Um, I just wanted to express to everyone else tonight that, um, for the last couple of meetings, we've had pretty light agendas, as we've been dealing mostly with COVID-related items and, um, changes to school schedules and updates and all that kind of thing. And, um, with the addition of some presentations and our sort of beginning of, of budget season, our meetings are gonna get a little bit longer. And so, as we, uh, move forward and, and have these Zoom meetings, which is great because we can see everybody and, yeah, people tend to get really comfortable in their homes and forget that we're still on the timetable of, of having a meeting, and our meetings have been running almost two hours with, with nothing on them, essentially. So, um, with some longer presentations, I just wanted to remind everyone to really think deeply about what questions you may want to ask in the meeting and what questions or things could be clarified through an email follow-up, um, as we move forward, especially with things like the presentation tonight, which doesn't require a vote or anything. It's more provided as, um, some really important information that I know at least Diane and I have been waiting for, for a couple of years to hear. So this is, um, a very exciting presentation tonight. Um, I know you saw that we may have, that we have, um, an emergency agenda item that we're gonna be talking about tonight, too. So just be mindful of listening to, um, your colleagues and, and trying not to, um, ask repetitive questions, and I am gonna stick to the one question at a time, and if you have a follow-up after other people have had an opportunity to ask, then I will move to you then, okay? So, um, that brings us to public participation. Per policy, B E D H, members of the public may speak for up to three minutes on items not included on this agenda. Comments regarding items on the agenda should be made during that part of the meeting. Typically, typically, the committee slash administration will not respond to comments during public participation. Please use the hand raise feature, not the chat. Um, is there anyone, and we will, yeah, we will be timing the three minutes and we'll give you a one-minute heads-up if, um, you're getting close to your time. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak?
Charlie, you can go ahead and speak, if you unmute yourself. Charlie, you can go ahead. All right, I'm gonna, um, go to someone else. Marty, you can go ahead and speak, if you unmute.
Good evening. My name is Martin Benson, and I'm a 2006 alumni of ABRHS. Many in town are dismayed that on October 15th Superintendent Peter Light falsified a legal document by omitting key process requirements in his explanation of the file FF naming district facilities policy. A robust records request submitted to the school committee revealed the following about how the decision was reached. One, there was a coordinated effort between the administration and the school committee chair to ensure that the colonial was retired. Peter Light, Don Bentley, and Betty Baker promoted only the opinions of those students who wanted to retire the mascot. Simultaneously, school committee chair Tessa McKinley sought to expedite the retirement process by limiting the voices with opposing views from the community. Nora Shine even suggested replacing the colonial with a sea turtle prior to the vote on October 15th. Two, both the administration and school committee sought to limit public discourse. The administration was initially alarmed when students began expressing their desire to keep the colonial. Unlike their counterparts, they weren't allowed to speak before a school committee or faculty meeting. Also, students who favored keeping the colonial were often unable to present their opinion during classroom discussions on the matter. Mr. Light will likely make the false statement that students were scared to speak publicly, which brings me to point number three. Three, a disappointing lack of forethought amongst our educational leaders led to an unsafe environment for students and community members on all sides of this debate. Students who were unaware this debate was occurring unknowingly wore their colonial gear to school, were accused of being called, quote, racist, or, quote, white supremacist by some of their peers. Countless parents wrote the school system, expressing their concerns that this issue had spiraled out of control and created a toxic environment at the worst possible time for everyone. Four, President and the school committee participates in the CED program, which is led by Don Bentley. The school committee denies they violated the open meeting law when they discussed the colonial during a CED training focusing on difficult discussions on July 30th. Ironically, shortly after the vote to retire the mascot, administrators circulated articles focusing on helping students to accept difficult decisions. Five, lastly, texts between Chair Tessa McKinley and administrators are both illuminating and discouraging. In a text to Peter Light-
One minute remaining.
In a text to Pe- to Peter Light, the chair refers to those who support keeping, uh, to support keeping the mascot as, quote, racist. In text exchange between her and Don Bentley, the pair speaks disparagingly about a large segment of the AB population, which is in strict violation of the district's bullying policy. We expect our leaders to unite the community, not divide it. In conclusion, this isn't a movement that is going to dissipate. The school committee needs to keep in mind that 76% of the households in Acton don't have school-aged children, yet 2/3 of their municipal taxes go to the school system. In four years, the town and nation will celebrate the 250th anniversary of the battles of Lexington and Concord. Many in the community would appreciate if the school committee and administration would at least learn our history rather than cancel it. In doing so, they might learn our towns have an illustrious history of standing up to tyrannical governments. The school committee must vote to vacate their illegitimate decision and should begin to approach its role with the same level of honor and courage that our colonial forbearers displayed. If this topic is revisited in the future, it's imperative the school committee follow its own policy.
Thank you. Your time is up. Andrew, you can go ahead and speak.
Thank you for hearing me, uh, school committee and, and everyone else on the call today. I'll be brief. Uh, my name's Andrew Rogiro, class of 2003 from the high school, 99 from RJ Grade Junior High, and I believe 97 from Gates School. So, uh, it's a long time ago, but it's, I've been an Acton-Boxboro colonial since leaving Emerson Hospital. Um, really discouraged at how our mascot, which I take tremendous pride in personally, has not only been in the crosshairs but executed in what has been a really just rife with, uh, conflicts of interest and, um, no real voices being heard with how this decision was made. I think more than talking about how it was pushed through, really in a, in a, in a deplorable way, I wanted to share with you a little bit about what being a colonial from Acton means to me. Uh, moments at, before learning that this was a possibility in October, I had just wrapped up talking to somebody, a stranger, about where I'm from, I'm down in North Carolina now, and how my town is where this country started. So when Obama spoke in, after the Boston Marathon tragedy and talked about how Massachusetts founded America, he is talking about the colonials. He is talking about Sir Isaac Davis and the folks that assembled to march across Concord Bridge and whitewashing that by saying it's racist to use that name is a great disservice to everyone who's lived in this town since Sir Isaac Davis through present day. A town that's mixed white collar, blue collar, the upper class, middle class, the poor, a true diversity we've assembled on football fields, in classrooms, our bands, our academic decathlons, in success under the colonial name. And just because some flavor of the day decides that that is incorrect, this is, name does not represent colonialism across the world and throughout history.
One minute remaining.
Represents the colonials of Acton. It represents the settlers. It represents our revolutionary history, our standing up for what's right, and to whitewash it through a lens of diversity is just abhorrent. In, in some of the comments that were made in the paper after the decision was made, one of the folks that drove home this message, and that this is a hateful term, said that the fact that there's so many people that's defend the name colonial shows how long, how far we still have to go. So what you are saying is that my opinions, my beliefs, my pride in our town isn't worth anything to you. The lack of diversity of thought in this process is also, should be noted. A unanimous decision to change it. Unanimous. There wasn't a single person that voted on this that thought, hmm, you know what? There is something to be proud of in the name colonial. So take this opportunity to educate the children that don't understand why-
Thank you, Andrew. Your time is up. Charlie, you can try and speak now.
Seems like maybe he's having a hard time with us.
Yeah, Charlie, you there? I think you're muted again. Charlie, we're not, we don't hear anything, so I'm gonna go on to someone else and we'll try to come back to you one more time. Dave, you can speak.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, Dave Cropper, 2006 alumni of Acton. I'm down in Shrewsbury right now. So I spent the better part of the last two weeks up in Acton and in Boxboro, as I still have, my parents live there, they lived there for 30 years and have many friends in town. When I spoke to them, students, faculty, business owners, private citizens, not one of them were in favor of the decision to remove our school system's envelope. Now, you might say, well, that doesn't mean much, they're probably just like-minded individuals if you're talking to them. But here's where I was shocked. In my own small little attempt to contribute to having your vote overturned, I had a handful of long signs made to raise awareness for the cause. And as I was making my way through the town, I began receiving unknown text messages and comments from strangers, from passerby's on the street requesting to have one. And after only a week and a half, as we sit here at 7:17 on December 17th, I have requests from 203 households asking for a sign. Now, the individual I was put in touch with to create these on such short notice turned out to be a citizen from Lexington, ironically, and when I told him what they were for, he had them turned around in two days and overnighted to me at half of his normal rate, because he did not want the same mindset nor movement moving into his town and threatening the Minutemen over there. I feel for the kids in Acton right now, I do. I, I, it used to mean something to say you were from Acton or Boxboro, but I feel as though they've just been misguided, if even guided at all, by the adults in their lives. And to be fair, first and foremost, from alumni and former citizens like myself, I'll fall on that sword. I mean, I should've done a better job at telling the history and the story of Acton to keep our heritage alive. I guess I assumed there were more who would carry on that torch, but it seems that-
One minute remaining.
It seems that story has stopped being told. That's the first tragedy of the situation. Our legacy is being forgotten. But secondly, and what's far worse, is that in its place, a new altered and false narrative about our early citizens is taking its place, and there are no adults there to guide and correct their misconceptions. It seems as though the kids in that town are just leading the adults. I mean, you can nurture their critical thinking skills and development without yielding to their every thought, and that's where I think this committee and a large portion of the faculty are doing a major injustice to their minds. You're, you're teaching them to be blamers. You're teaching them to focus on the obstacles in their lives rather than the opportunities. You're teaching them that some external factor is controlling their lives and not their internal resolve. And while you may think you're strengthening who they are in the short term, you are weakening who they will become as they enter adulthood, where the world does not just change because you were personally inconvenienced.
Thank you, Dave. Your time is up. Scott, you can speak.
Scott Smires, Central Street. I wanna break things up a little bit and switch gears to a topic I did not see on the agenda, but I know it's coming up sometime soon, and I hope the school committee takes it seriously in reconsidering anything to do with MCAS this year. It seems a waste of time, and we don't need that distraction taking away from whatever valuable learning time we can have with our students at all grade levels. I don't know if that decision has been made, but I know it's coming up, and you should reconsider it. Also, back to the colonial, please. Policy F was mentioned earlier, that needs to be fully addressed. That needs to be fully talked about, why they didn't follow their own pol- why you didn't follow your own policy. Uh, it's number two. Uh, I read, I read many of the email comments, I read many of the statements from the school committee. Um, there's a group of people from town that are reading the emails that are all submitted, and I think we have a different opinion as to their comments that were submitted, as to how terrible they were or examples of, of, uh, racism in town. And, uh, that should be more carefully thought about. We did have one school committee member that made a great statement in his official statement on the mascot or team name, and that's John Peterson. He identified this quite well, I thought, as a logical fallacy called an appeal to an ambivalent authority. And I'd like John to talk about that whenever he can, to explain to us why he identified that so clearly, and then he turned around and voted. Thank you for the rest of my time. Thank you.
Charlie, we're gonna try and come back to you one more time here.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Hey, finally, it worked. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, I have a comment and a request. The comment, again, it's on the colonials, but what I want to do is start with a, one of the many quotes from Martin Luther King, who said he's looking forward to a day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I think what's happening here is that the colonial, as depicted by various representations by the mascot, is being judged by the color of his or her skin, while the content of their character is very, very similar to the character of the students who are being organized to depose the mascot. It's not about what the mascot looks like or what clothing he or she may wear, but what they did with their lives. And I think there is a lot of common ground that's being totally missed by the adults who should be giving the children a much better perspective about the history of this country, which is significantly more like the character that we desire than is being portrayed. My request is that the school committee rescind their vote, start over again.
One minute remaining.
This town has enough division. Racism is a very serious matter. Accusing people or the entire town of racism is a very serious accusation, which cannot be backed up by any facts. There are plenty of facts. The entire history of Acton over the 50 years that I've lived here shows that Acton is not a racist town, which is why most of the people who live here now are here. So let's start over. I ask the school committee to put on their agenda a vote to rescind the motion of October 15th, while there is still time to salvage it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
I don't think I see any additional hands up. Do you, Peter? No? Okay. All right. So then the next item on our agenda is Peter's update.
All right. So I have a few things for you tonight. Um, you know, first, and I'm sure you've seen on MASC liftserves, but the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, voted this week on the 15th to adopt a new set of regulations around student time on learning. Uh, this was something that we believe was significant enough. Uh, even though it was late notice, we put it on as a separate agenda item, and we're going to be addressing that after the reading presentation. Um, the public health numbers in Acton and Boxboro were actually pretty stable over the last week when compared to the previous week. Uh, we continue to be in the yellow in Acton and in the green in Boxboro. Um, we are continuing to see an increase in cases over the last few weeks since Thanksgiving. Um, the first couple of weeks after Thanksgiving, it was pretty quiet in our schools in terms of new cases of COVID. Uh, however, we are seeing that increase again over the last, um, week or so, um, in particular at the high school again, um, because I think the kids are a little bit more mobile. It's something we're watching closely. We have seen, you know, um, probably six or seven cases over the last week and a half at the high school with our students, so, uh, we need to watch that. We're really trying to get a couple of days of in-person learning. Um, you know, we heard from one of our pediatricians today who treats some students, uh, and she was talking with them while they were out of school, uh, the last time we closed down, and she was commenting about how the kids really thought that the closure was impacting, even if it was only for a couple of weeks, uh, and that they really, really valued the in-person learning. I know there's no right answer to that. Um, you know, we have to make sure everyone is safe, uh, but we also have to be thinking about kind of the mental health impacts of keeping schools open. So we're continuing to monitor that, and we'll be, we'll be looking at that closely over the next few days. Um, you know, I do wanna make an announcement. Um, I sent you an email, but I, I think it's significant enough to just, um, recognize David Crane. David Crane has been the principal at McCarthy Town for, I believe it's now the last 11 years. Um, and, you know, he's done just a tremendous job. He, you know, has done so much for this community, uh, particularly at elementary school, uh, really just continuing to foster the culture of that school. Um, and he announced this week that he will be retiring at the end of this year, um, so we're gonna very much miss him, uh, but he is, he goes off and explores some of his other interests in life, so congratulations to David, and he will also be sorely missed. Um, over the next couple of weeks, we will start sending out information to the McCarthy Town community or the search process. Um, people in that, that school committee can stay tuned. Um, and we will keep you updated as we go through the search process. Uh, we do have a couple of other leadership search processes underway, so I'll turn it over to Marie if you wanna give a little bit of an update.
Sure thing. Good evening, everybody. Um, as you know, Principal Dory at the high school is also retiring this year, um, and we have begun that search process for our high school principal. Um, we have a committee of 22 people representing all different parts of the high school, parents, um, students, and faculty. We've had four meetings, and we've posted the job. We actually posted it ourselves on, um, I think November 3rd, so it was posted for about five or six weeks. And, um, as of right now, we have 24 applicants. We, um, have also hired NESTEC, the New England School Development Council. They do, um, leadership, school leadership searches for superintendents and principals and other positions, and they have, um, a pretty extensive database, and they do recruiting. And so, given the importance of the position and the fact that we know that there aren't tons and tons of people out there, um, for some of the leadership positions, we have asked them to do the recruiting side of the equation for us, so that we get the best candidates we can get. They will be doing that through, um, January, like, the second week of January. Um, and then we will also look at any applications that they pull in. We'll do interviews at the end of January, and we anticipate having finalists, um, by the beginning of February and an appointment by February vacation. That's the high school search. You also know we have an interim director of special ed. Debbie Dixon has been with us for two years as an interim director. Um, we are, we have started the process to find a permanent director of special education. We have another committee for that. We have 20 people. We've had a couple of meetings already, and, um, we know that that's a very hard position to find many candidates for. We went through this process last winter, um, and a couple of years before that. So we, um, we have also engaged NESTEC to help us find candidates for that. So we really contracted with NESTEC for those two openings, um, and they just posted, or they're posting tomorrow, today or tomorrow, they're posting our director of special ed. Um, NESTEC advertises nationally, they advertise within Massachusetts, they recruit, they have an extensive database of, of candidates. So we do, um, hope that they will have good success in bringing forward good candidates. Again, we'll be interviewing, um, late January, early February, and we, um, will be bringing finalists forward by mid-February and, um, hope to have an appointment by the end of February or early March at the latest. Um, that, that particular position, director of special education, um, the final candidate will be brought to the school committee. The school committee votes, um, that appointment upon the recommendation of the superintendent. So those two searches are underway. David Crane just announced, um, publicly this week, and we will form a committee after the new year, and it'll be probably two weeks behind the others, but it'll be in the same kind of timeframe. So, um, lots going on, and we hope to bring forward really strong leaders to take the district forward.
Next update is around winter sports. Um, you know, we have just launched our winter sports season. We have a number of sports going. Um, you know, I did have a couple of questions from, that have come in, in, from various community members, uh, just around particularly hockey and basketball. Um, and I know some communities have determined not to run these. Uh, we are running them. Um, so, you know, I think one of the interesting things about hockey and basketball is they are higher-risk sports, um, in terms of transmission of the virus. So as we were considering this decision, we did a couple of things. Uh, one, we took a look at, um, our data for our athletes over the course of the fall and for cases of COVID that, um, came through our teams, and we actually had zero cases on our athletic teams over the course of the fall. Um, so I think that speaks to our coaches and our student athletes having overall done a really nice job in terms of following protocols and staying safe. We also looked at, um, kind of the, any possible cases that involved either our hockey or basketball players- That involved either our hockey or basketball players due to playing on club sports throughout the fall. You know, as you know, at high school level, a lot of high school athletes play various club sports outside of seasons during high school time. We also didn't have any cases of spread for our high school level athletes. We did hear some stories about youth hockey in the community and youth basketball, but we did not have those issues with our high school age students. And so, you know, based on that information, it's been really important for me to follow the data as we try and make these decisions. I think at an emotional level, I worry a lot that, you know, they're labeled higher risk sports. But when I look at the data around that, it was important that I think we support our kids in giving them the opportunity, you know, as best we can. We have communicated with all of the families of, in particular, those sports. And, you know, if any student were to test positive at some point on one of those teams. Or if they end up playing someone and one of the opposing teams has a positive test. You know, all of our teams know that they're going to end up having to quarantine for the two-week period. Because we have to make sure the rest of the school is safe as well. And then in addition, we put an additional clause in for our hockey and basketball players, which are our two high-risk sports. That during the season that they play for us, they cannot play for any club teams at the same time. Because we were worried that if kids are playing for us and they're playing for club teams. We worry a little bit more about risks of, of transmission of the virus and, you know, there could potentially be a case of COVID on a club team that then makes it into our team. And we wanted to really, you know, have some good risk mitigation strategies. That's obviously going to be a hard decision for a few of our players who may be playing on an additional club team. But we thought it was really important to make sure that, you know, we could offer sports safely and do it in a way that doesn't negatively impact the rest of the school. And then finally, you know, we had our first, you know, snow remote learning day today ever in our history of our town. You know, I will not say that it was universally loved by everyone. I think some people look forward more to a traditional snow day. Other people look for, you know, kind of had the mindset of let's get through this year as quickly as we can and kind of keep things rolling and be consistent. We're going to actually send out a survey to families and students, educators tomorrow anyway. We'll talk more about that in a few minutes, but we're going to include a question around snow days and just gather a little bit of feedback around community preferences. It's really the choice, obviously, between, you know, taking a snow day now and then adding that on at the end of the year. Obviously, our seniors are always the most disappointed if they don't get a snow day because they're the only group that has traditionally not had to make up days at the end of the year. Although Desi has been talking a little bit about graduation this year and trying to make sure seniors get as much education as possible. But we'll send that out and we'll ask some opinions around how we move forward. I don't think anyone on our leadership team is particularly set. I think, you know, the biggest piece for us in making the decision was around trying to have some continuity in education at this point because it's been so disrupted. And particularly with the hybrid model, we didn't want our kids not to see their teachers live in some format for that full week in between sessions, so. We'll get some feedback. We'll come back to you, update you with what our plans are as we move forward. In terms of superintendent update, we're happy to answer a couple of questions, but I also know we have a pretty busy agenda as we move forward.
I just want to note to people in the audience that we are not using the chat function, so if you have a question, then it's imperative that you raise your hand in the audience so to be able to ask it. Does anyone on the committee have a question? Okay, alright, thank you, Peter, for that update. The next item on the agenda is something I've been waiting for, for a very long time and very excited that we have. A structured literacy presentation tonight with some important people. We welcome Dr. Deb Bookus, Sharon Ryan, Dora Sanchez and Dr. Joanna Krista Dulu. Who actually, I've had the honor of meeting before because she tested my kids for a research project. So it's kind of cool to get to see her speak tonight or share in the presentation. So welcome, everybody.
You and Debbie Dixon, our interim special education director, is also going to be joining us for this presentation.
Sorry, Deb, that wasn't, it wasn't in my notes.
I was working on getting everyone to be panelists.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's what I.
You did have a really quick question. Sorry, I didn't see your hand up before when I asked.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. I just wanted to say that. Say thank you to Peter for his update, but I also wanted to say. That nobody should be saying that there's no racism in Acton. If you don't walk in somebody's shoes, you don't know how tight they are. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, Deb, did I get everyone for this presentation?
Yes, I can't see Dr. Krista Dulu yet. I just want to make sure that she's all set.
There we go. Alright, very good. So I am, now I have to work on sharing the screen, so just give me one second. Awful lot of steps and I want to make sure I.
So while we're doing that, I can just let you all know that we are really excited to share with all of you the work that's been happening from behind the scenes. This last, probably almost now two years. It does take a little while to, to learn, to understand, to create an environment that's ready. And so we are all here tonight to share that work with you. And so I'm going to let our, our guest panelists introduce themselves. We've learned that it's actually in Zoom, good Zoom instruction, it's good to have everyone have an opportunity to have their voice enter into the environment right from the beginning. So I'll let them do that. I'm Deborah Bookus. I'm assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. And then next on our list is, go ahead, Debbie.
I'm Debbie Dixon. I'm the interim special education director here.
Sharon?
I'm Sharon Ryan. I am the pre-K to literacy and social studies curriculum coordinator for Acton Boxborough.
And Dora?
Good evening. I'm Dora Sanchez, the three-sixth courses studies and literacy curriculum coordinator.
And Dr. Krista Dulu?
Hi, I'm Joanna Krista Dulu, I'm an associate professor at MGH's Institute of Health Professions.
So glad you could all be here with us this evening. So we'll just say next, Peter, when we need the slide to be advanced. Terrific. So our presentation tonight is going to touch on the following areas. We want to make sure that we give you big picture context as well as our local context, what we've been doing right here in Acton Boxborough. We want to share with you our research partners, the professional learning that's been taking place. Content continuum of assessment that we've created. Tell you a little bit about the curriculum instructional support, our connections with family and caregivers and the community partnerships that we forged. And then to end with our goals and then, of course, your questions. Alright, so I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Krista Dulu to start us off with the big picture of what's happening in the reading world. So next.
Thank you so much. So I'm here to set the stage for the content that the remainder of the presentation will address. I'm setting this stage, next, please advance. Starting with this very international scale, the attention that people have been bringing to how reading should be taught in a way that hopefully addresses. At-risk readers, those in the earliest stages of reading acquisition who are at risk of challenges. Is not just pervasive in this local community, but on an international scale, particularly in countries where English is the, is the language of instruction. So I'm starting off with Australia as a, as an example, across the world where they're currently enjoying a summertime without the snow that we got today. But this is an example to show you the scale of reform for reading instruction that has gained incredible momentum. Across this international way, as well as national, local and organizational scales. So this example here is important because Australia has historically been a place where the focus of reading instruction. Has used an approach that has not been strongly supported by research. And these recent efforts, even in this country that has been infiltrated by a very longstanding approach to reading instruction. Has been updated by the openness and attention to science to drive instruction that brings attention to phonics instruction. And awareness of students' knowledge for how sounds and letters relate. And if we advance to the next example, I'll just bring that scale a little bit closer. So bringing us from the international scale where there, where there is a lot of momentum. To take a careful look at how reading is taught and how that matches the science of reading. I want to highlight a grassroots effort. There's a group called the Reading League. The Reading League is a group that really recently was put forth and it's a group for really everyone. Administrators, educators, district leaders, parents and practitioners. And the effort was to say, there's so much knowledge, but it's not always in the hands of those who want it and need it. And so this momentum again has, is created this group that has dedicated itself to empowering all of these stakeholders. With research-based knowledge and skills. If you advance, the next example is more local, brings us to the state level where the state of Massachusetts has been incredibly forthcoming. And bringing attention to the story of dyslexia and reading in general. So many of you may be aware that recently the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education passed legislation. To ensure that children who are at risk of dyslexia are being screened. Or I should say that all children were being screened to pick up on those who may be at risk of reading challenges like dyslexia. Not only that, but this resource I'm highlighting here called Mass Literacy. Is an effort to empower educators with evidence-based practices for literacy for all students. That your very own Sharon Ryan was a part of the team that created this. I highlight that to give us again the scale that this momentum from the international grassroots and state levels. Is what you're going to see showcased in your own district here. So the last advance here, there's one more example to share. Is taken from another grassroots organization, this one driven by parents of struggling readers. This group is called Decoding Dyslexia and each state has a branch. And this was just a really wonderful interview that they had with an assistant superintendent. Who was showcasing how they've taken a careful look at their approach to reading and have revised and updated it with a data-driven approach. I set this stage because my efforts and my support of what the district has been doing to address reading instruction. Assessment and so forth, I see this district as a role model for others. And it's been so inspirational to see how from teachers to administrators, everyone in between. Has been so proactive, open and, and eager to advance the science of reading in this community. So I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you. So now to sort of bring it to the picture frame. Last, you know, we had a literacy vision committee and they started to do a starting, their reading outcomes for students. So the first is to find meaning in and access knowledge from a text. And that includes the ability to use background knowledge to create meaning. And we also want our students to learn and to know how to lose oneself in a book, to get lost in a book, as we said. We also want them to learn to use reading for different purposes, as a skill or a tool for furthering their own learning, as well as to adore. Or to open to different life experiences. We want them to be able to think critically and deeply, which also includes the ability to solve problems, to ask thoughtful questions, to identify bias, to make inferences. We also want our students to be able to make connections to the world and to be able to see themselves and others in books and to be able to take a different perspective. Advance the next one. There we go. And then lastly, but with great emphasis, we want our students to be able to find joy in a book. For reading to be a joyous experience for them. And so if you advance to the next slide. Our statement is that skillful readers are joyful readers. So one must be skilled at reading in order to reap the excitement, the escapism, the knowledge and the joy. That comes from reading. And every step of the way, though, we need to be able to hold both. These two outcomes are not mutually exclusive, rather they are complementary components. So the work within the district really comes down to being a conceptual change for us. And so I want to talk a little bit about how we're going about that work. The first is, we are going to be using research and have been using research to inform the change. And then what we do is we take that sharing of that research and we make sure that we have multiple access points for our educators to enter into. So we start with the question why, and then again, answering it in different ways that people can enter in. Sometimes that's with the research itself, right, through reading. Sometimes it's through the heart, so with emotions and seeing the impact on children. And then oftentimes it's with a clear path for action. You're going to hear a little bit about how we're using some of the data. That we've been able to accrue in order to create a clear path for us. Next, we are going to be respecting our educators, oh, no, right back, respecting our past practice, our educators' past practices. But also helping them to unlearn and then relearn different instructional practices. As well as encouraging our educators to become better diagnosticians of their own practice. We're building a community of educators dedicated. This is a group of, we talked about, speech and language pathologists, psychologists, our families and caregivers, our building leaders, our researchers. And our public and school library media specialists. We are being very explicit about where the work lies. We know from the district results of the iReady assessment that we recently gave, as well as some past year's MCAS results. Vocabulary, for example, is an area that needs attention. And so this data again is leading to our actionable changes. We are enacting change at a systematic level and this is in order to improve consistency and efficacy. And we are being practical and strategic. Last year, the literacy vision committee defined the roles and responsibilities within a tiered system of support. But pandemic teaching is really not the time to alter teachers' roles or responsibilities. However, this time did not stop us from looking for opportunities as we continue to support our educators and our families and students. And so a little bit later, as the presentation continues, you'll hear about the changes this year. So as practitioners, we need to read the research, but we also need to actively engage with the folks who are conducting the research. Because we know, as Dr. Krista Dulu said earlier, it often takes a long time for the research to actually reach us. Next slide. So we are really fortunate to have been able to forge the following partnerships. And we are grateful to these individuals and institutions who have provided their time and wisdom. And you'll hear a little bit more about them and from one of them throughout this presentation. And so now I'm going to turn this over to Sharon. Next slide.
Thank you. So the first thing that we're going to do is focus a bit on professional learning. Because it has been a vital and foundational component of our continued growth within the district. Next, please. Our ABSRD elementary curriculum coordinators and chairs have been working diligently. To stay abreast of the latest literacy research and advancements. Several notable endeavors include a four-day MIT neuroscience of reading and symposium. With Dr. Joanna Krista Dulu and Dr. John Gabrielli. And a two-day science of language and literacy seminar hosted again by Dr. Krista Dulu and Dr. Tiffany Hogan. We also have membership in and our active members are well-respected international, national and statewide literacy organizations. Including the International Dyslexia Association, International Literacy Association and the Massachusetts Reading Association. Our ABRSD educators, if you can show me the next tab. Thank you. Have continued to also expand their expertise through professional learning related to bridging cognitive neuroscience. And effective literacy practices, literacy pedagogy, reading engagement and motivation and inclusive children's literature. After the holidays, we have thirty educators who are going to be participating in a crafting minds workshop, a three-credit course. That's focused on dyslexia, dysgraphia and dyskoguna. And we will have teams of three to four participants, each representing different roles in the district. There's also a brand-new Mass Desi grant opportunity that we'll be pursuing after the holidays when the request for proposals is released. It's called GLEAM and it is an acronym for Growing Literacy Equity across Massachusetts. And it's a competitive grant that will fund ELA initiatives. And hopefully be able to procure high-quality, evidence-based curriculum materials and intervention materials for professional educators, principals and literacy coaches. Debbie Dixon has also done some work with the special educators and wanted to also mention this part.
Thank you. I just wanted to share some of the work that the special education department did last year. Under the leadership of Heather Stow, the elementary school psych chair. Lynn Plummy, the speech pathologist chair and Belle Granzewitz, one of the elementary coordinators. The elementary special education department focused its professional learning on reading and reading disabilities and dyslexia. We divided the training into three phases. Phase one. We divided the training into three phases. Phase one included focus on foundational knowledge and a review of the research. In this phase, we took time to dispel a few myths about dyslexia, including the notion that dyslexia is a term that educators could not use. And including that it was a term that, or diagnosis that only medical professionals could make. In phase two, we focused on assessment. And we explored all of these assessments that we could use as educators to identify dyslexia and reading disabilities. And we learned new assessments that were considered the gold standard for identifying reading disabilities and dyslexia. And we practiced using these assessments. Phase three was supposed to include looking at interventions, but of course, the pandemic stopped our work in this area. So we've continued this year in small pockets of this, but it's an area that we're going to continue to work on. And back to you, Sharon.
Thank you. If you could go to the next, please. So I wanted to share with you something that's very near and dear and to my heart, and it's a very special initiative in our district. I am currently enrolled as a doctoral candidate in the Doctor of Education and Literacy Program through Judson University in Elgin, Illinois, as a fully synchronous, first-generation telepresence distance learner, which means I attend class through robot. My dissertation research is focused on the topic of fostering a synergistic partnership between cognitive neuroscientists and educators to dispel neuromyths and expand expertise associated with early markers of dyslexia. It's comprised of two sample groups, one from last year and one from this year, and it also includes a myriad of specialties, including K-2 classroom teachers, administrators, EOL teachers, reading specialists, speech and language pathologists, special educators, specialists and curriculum coordinators. I currently have twenty-one study participants and we are collaborating to learn all that we can about the early markers of dyslexia. And the group has had the pleasure of hearing from Dr. Krista Dulu as well as Dr. Nadine Gabb and the Mass Department Education Early Literacy Content Needs. The figure that's on this slide is important because it focuses on a support success circle, which is from the text that we're using Confering Dyslexia by Dr. Jan Hasbrook. And it depicts the importance of the shared responsibility and expertise of all children who surround a child and help them to grow and learn as literacy learners. The next slide just shows my two research questions that are focused on the baseline knowledge and neuromyths associated with the early markers of dyslexia. And thinking about how engagement and professional learning that's designed specifically to address these impact teacher's knowledge, classroom practice and teacher self and collective efficacy. If you can go to the next. Yes, thank you. We'd like to then shift our attention to knowing our students through continuum of assessment. So the next slide, yes, thank you, right here. What I'd like to do is to delve into the efficient and effective use of universal screening tools to identify or predict students who may be at risk for learning outcomes that they may have deficits. We have universal screening assessments that are designed to be brief and conducted with all students following a progress monitoring to corroborate with students' status, excuse me. After the initial screening, the educational teams work together to take that information to use for making decisions and differentiate instruction. Several of the ones that we're using are the kindergarten screening protocol, which is called the Dial Four. We also added to the kindergarten protocol a a protocol form that helps to design instruction to be able to help educators understand what the next steps might be and to gather all the information. We also initiated Curriculum Associates iReady Literacy Assessment. And we have other screeners, including the DIBELS, Rapid Automatic Naming and the Hegarty Screener, including also the World Language, World Class Instructional Design Assessment, the WIDA, and a preschool language proficiency screener. So all of those are in use right now. If you could shift to the next. And the reason for utilizing these screening tools is because the skills that are assessed link closely to key childhood predictors of reading problems, including a family history of learning problems, phonological awareness, pseudo-name repetition, pseudo-word repetition, excuse me, rapid automatized naming, expressive and receptive vocabulary, letter and sound knowledge, and oral listening comprehension. I bet you never knew what was involved in getting to learn how to read. As shown in this graphic by Dr. Oznad Kalcheck and Dr. Gabb, there is a mismatch sometimes between the timing of the screenings and interventions and the most impactful time for effective intervention. And this is called the dyslexia paradox. We need to think about intervening early and providing support to assure that the most important and effective instruction is intervened at the time in life when the brain is most malleable. We truly have the capability to effectively rewire the brain through early intervention. Next, please. We also have informal classroom assessments that are the next logical step if a child is identified as potentially being at risk through a screening. These include running records, benchmark assessments, the Rosner Test of Auditory Analysis Skills and curricular-specific diagnostic tools, ordering lists, analysis of student work, observation and teacher anecdotal notes, which are so, so very important, and then student and family interviews and checklists. Next, please. We also have progress monitoring and formative assessments to assess students' academic performance to quantify a child's rate of improvement to response to intervention, including the iReady. We have the foundations progress monitoring tool and daily assessments. The ELE department has an annual monitoring, the WIDA rubrics for reading, writing, speaking and listening in the English language and the DIBELS K-6. And I will turn it over to Debbie.
Thank you. And as much as we may screen and assess, the risk factors for reading disabilities and dyslexia may not appear until a child is a bit older and when the task demands increase and the vulnerabilities in the child are magnified. It might be at this time where we might need to do more diagnostic assessment through special education referral and evaluation. At this time, we would conduct a more comprehensive, individualized, focused and multidisciplinary assessment, including assessment across all the domains that are listed here. We would look at a child's cognitive skills, language, reading, writing, and also math. And we would delve deeply into all of these areas using several of the assessments that are listed here. As I mentioned earlier, the Special Education Department has worked over the past year to learn about all of these assessments and have developed a protocol to look at cross-disciplinary means to identify areas that contribute to reading challenges to be able to identify dyslexia. We've worked to build competence and confidence in our diagnostic measures and assessments to provide the gold standard for assessment, looking at reading disabilities and dyslexia. I think next is Dora.
Hello. To keep equate every student in our schools must receive a high-quality curriculum and evidence-based instruction they need and deserve. To reach this, we are relying heavily on robust research from multiple intersecting fields, including education, psychology and neuroscience, which backs up evidence-based ideas known as the science of reading. Next, please. Our reading curriculum consists of a comprehensive approach to literacy known as structured literacy. Research has shown that this approach is effective for all students and essential for students with dyslexia. Structured literacy instruction addresses all the foundational elements that are critical for reading comprehension as outlined in the Simple View Reading and the Scarborough Reading Rope Model. Reading is a complex process, yet can be explained with the following models which we're using to drive our work. Next. Thank you. This widely accepted model shows that reading comprehension, labeled here R, has two basic components. Word level decoding slash word recognition ability, labeled as D, and listening slash oral language comprehension ability, labeled here as C. This model is called the Simple View Reading. Good readers have strong abilities in both components of reading. If decoding or language comprehension is poor, then reading comprehension will be affected. Next. The next model shows how all the distinct components contained within the Simple View Reading come together as one increasingly automatic and strategic skill, reading. Dr. Scarborough's reading rope model focuses on word recognition and language comprehension, each of which has several components. The upper language comprehension strand we've gathered with the lower word recognition strand to provide a skilled reader. This does not happen overnight and it does require skilled teaching and practice over time. This model helps teachers think about how the strands of reading skill interact with and boost one another. Without any strand, the rope is weak. By strengthening each strand deliberately, educators can help readers become strategic and automatic readers. Next, please. The ladder, the ladder of reading created by Nancy Young features the categories and percentages that illustrates the ratio of individuals who require an explicit, sequential, systematic, phonics-based approach to learning to read, compared to the small proportions of individuals who learn to read effortlessly. Next, please. That being said, we are excited about all the work we have started to ensure that educators have what they need when teaching reading. This image is an example of our ongoing work. It shows the district's reading overview. It is broken by domains, although you only see foundational skills here, which covers decoding and word recognition. There are other domains as well, such as the oral language, which contains vocabulary, syntax and grammar, language comprehension, comprehension, which includes narrative and informative. Within each of these domains slash strands, we have provided or will provide the research and resource. As new resources are implemented in our classrooms, PL, professional learning, will be included. We're also in the process of replacing existing human systems in our classroom. Next, please. Part of our work also includes research-based literacy practices in the areas of text complexity which you see here, along with foundational skills influencing, knowledge building and vocabulary, which are not included in this image, but are part of the document. Next, please. In addition to the universal curriculum, we have identified ways to support students who may need individual or group support. Our students are always at the forefront, as indicated here in this image. When students need additional support, educators such as English language educators, reading specialists, special educators, et cetera, communicate frequently and use a variety of tools to meet students' needs, such as foundation, literacy program, Lexia Learning, and others that you see listed on this image. Debbie?
Thank you. For those students who need support beyond the universal or the additional support provided through general ed, it may be that a student is found eligible for services and supports through an IEP due to a specific learning disability in reading or because of dyslexia. If so, it is essential to provide intensive support using evidence-based practices through the multisensory, systematic and sequential approach to reading and learning. We must explicitly teach the targeted skills that were previously outlined. We must ensure that the program is implemented with fidelity. And by that, I mean that the program is implemented in the manner in which it's designed. This is typically done in one-to-one or a very small group with like and similar peers. We must ensure that we bring students to mastery, so that students are internalizing the skills and that they leave lessons with confidence and the mastery of the skills taught. It's also critically important that the skills are coordinated cross-setting. So by that, I mean the services or the skills are taught in the one-to-one setting, but it's also coordinated with the classroom teacher. So the classroom teacher can coordinate and practice the skills in the classroom. Or in the speech with a speech pathologist or at home with mom and dad. So that the child receives that support across multiple settings. And that will provide that child with the sufficient practice to really master the phonological awareness skills, the decoding skills, the encoding skills that are impacted by the dyslexia. On this page, you'll also see a picture of a heart and a brain at the bottom. And that was because I think it's also very important to keep in mind that these students are very capable learners. They have good minds and yet they're not able to read fluently and well, and they're quite aware of that. And we often see students develop secondary social-emotional challenges because they don't understand why they can't read well. And it's frustrating and it's embarrassing at the same time. So we need to be cognizant of that and provide social-emotional support and counseling on occasion to help children develop self-awareness and resilience and understanding of their disabilities. And then I also have a picture of a computer or laptop here because the other thing that we need to make sure that we do is provide the technologies to allow the children and young adults to access the curriculum and to get to the end goal through some technologies while they're mastering their reading skills. They are able to access the curriculum through technologies, demonstrate their knowledge and learning and eliminate the barriers that the print presents to them. And next.
Next slide, please. Thank you. We're happy to share, we're happy to share the strength and partnerships that we have for families, caregivers and communities. Next slide, please. We believe that working together with families will best up children after reading and school success. We are fortunate to be partnering with founder and CEO Joan Kelly of the Abound Parenting App, formerly known as the PUP Reading App. This is our fourth year that ABRSD families have had the opportunity to to receive this app for free and will continue to do so. This is a partnership that began first with pre-K students and families and has now been expanded to kindergarten first and second grade. This app designed by Joan Kelly, a former teacher and researcher at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, encourages families to start quick but meaningful daily conversations that build different types of reading skills, including vocabulary and knowledge. It is built around two themes, has book suggestions and specific conversation starters. There's more information about the Abound App in the packet that you've been given. Next, please. Additionally, we are happy to share the AB Literacy site that is filled with suggestions and resources that can help support families in reading. Next. First connection, Sharon Ryan is on the advisory board and offers early literacy workshops on occasion. Next two, please. One more. Thank you. We're happy to be partnering with our local library, Sergeant Memorial and Acting Memorial Library. Next. We have a few schools that are Title I that targets grades one and two, as well as the junior high school. We provide family outreach through reading connections, parent surveys, as well as family engagement events. Next, please. We have two little free libraries as well as literacy nights that are held at schools, which are other ways that we keep families and schools connected. And the last one. And we just recently this year have shared information regarding iReady, a new universal screener with our families. Thank you.
Okay, so where do we need to grow and what do we need to implement? Advance, please. So you've already heard about the assessments that have been implemented this year. And in the next In the next section on this slide, Curriculum Resources and Professional Learning, our plan is for all grade three educators to participate in a foundations workshop for implementation next fall of 2021. The next four bullets in this section indicate learning that we're going to implement this year. Issues for our special educators and English language educators. Wilson also for K-3, our special education educators. Hegemony, Fennec Awareness. And then we are also implementing decodable texts. And so we need to work with our educators around the use of those decodable texts in the early grades. We are also, the last two bullets are areas that we need to investigate in order to choose programs, and that's an academic vocabulary program and a word study program, along with the practices. The last section of the slide indicates the instructional practices we are focusing on. There are three different areas I want to bring your attention to. The first is text complexity. The second is foundational skills influencing. And the third, knowledge building and vocabulary. And these are just three examples of the work that has been implemented this year. Lastly, we're going to be conducting a review and writing a district selection guide for educators that want information. And we will continue to support the Abound K-2 guides for our families and our caregivers. Advance, please. Our ongoing work also includes continuing to build out the continuum of assessment, which will also need us to understand better how to analyze and utilize the results of these assessments to inform practice. And we will also be needing to implement a systematic and academic vocabulary and word study programs and to continue to provide professional learning. And lastly, we'll continue to implement the research-based literacy practices, which will be explicitly outlined for each grade. And again, those three different areas listed below, instructional practices. And then our last slide. So what do we hope that's going to look different because of this work? And we will have a process for support. So next year, the plan at the district level is to conduct a review of our student support team or our child study support team processes to make sure that we have some consistency across the district. There will be consistency across the district in terms of our expectations and with an explicit curriculum. There will be an earlier start to identification and support with the use of the continuum of assessment, which will also, again, include some screening tools. And we will have year-to-year internal measures. So iReady this fall was just a start. We're going to be administering the assessment again this spring. And many of the other assessments will also act as some internal measures for us. So I'm going to turn this back over to Dr. Krista Dulu to close us out.
Thank you. So what you see here is a Zoom capture from one of the many sessions that we have held over the pandemic time. And when it comes to fostering the reading skills of all students, there are characteristics that have been important for implementing change, updating practices, and staying current with best practice in reading instruction. These include efforts that are accelerated, bold, research-based, systematic, and district-wide. These also have to be characteristics I've noticed working with the districts. I wanted to say a few words about that. For the accelerated piece, since I started working with the district, change has been accelerated in crafting opportunities for educators to update knowledge and materials, but also to overcome common obstacles to change that are very common at all levels. For the bold piece, I know that everyone on their plate, from students to parents to educators to administrators, leadership, et cetera, during the pandemic have had so many things on their plate that were unexpected. But it's been incredible to see district priorities maintained and advanced for reading assessments and instruction and also change in longstanding and existing practices that have shifted in response to best practice available in the science of reading. For the research-based piece, there's a very strong foundation from research that the district has drawn from, that you've heard about tonight, from assessment and instruction. And the best part is there are so many more steps to look forward to for continuing that process. For change to work, the systematic and district-wide elements are crucial. Working in silos doesn't bring change that's going to be effective. And so having systematic change from the bottom up and top down and benefiting from the expertise in the community of educators in the district is one of the important pieces of this effort. And finally, this district-wide piece brings consistency across the community of educators and practitioners in recognizing how to find reading risk, identify dyslexia where needed, and to implement best practices for supporting all readers at all stages of the reading acquisition process. What's stood out to me is work is hard, change is hard, and the first step to improving practices is to be open and vulnerable to realizing what may not be the best approach. And so it's been really wonderful to partner with the district to think about change, improvement, amplification of best practice, and to see that from all levels. Thank you.
So as we close out, we are happy to take your questions. And I just want to be able to thank the panelists for being with us tonight and thank them for all their work alongside us in the trenches. So much appreciated.
Thank you all so much for such a thorough presentation. I'm sure that some of it was maybe a little much for people that don't have quite the reading background that I know some of us have or have been waiting to hear for years, but that was really incredibly thorough. So thank you so much for bringing that to us tonight. I really, really, really appreciate it more than you know. Are there members of the committee that have questions? I know that there was one attendee that does, but as we usually do, we do a conversation with the committee first. No one on the committee has a question? Daheen?
Thank you. So first of all, if I could do cartwheels and backups right now on the screen, I would. I just have... This is great. There's nothing short of great. Tessa, I'm kind of mad at you because I have four questions and I have to pick one of them.
Well, luckily for you, only two other people have their hands raised, so there's a good chance I will come back.
Okay. I guess my most pressing question is about the Early Bird screener. And that is, I guess, whoever wants to answer this. My understanding is that is a pilot, and so it's not going to be a permanent fixture here. And I'm wondering what data will the Early Bird screener yield that will be lost when the pilot is done, if there's any? And if you think that what's left is enough?
I would be honored to answer that. We are the single nationwide beta testing site for the Early Bird screener. And because of that, we are helping them to make the final tweaks of the app. Actually, we were working on it last year, and it was literally the week after we needed to leave school for the pandemic that we had slated to implement this. So we are a beta test site because it isn't anywhere yet. We anticipate that we will continue with this. We're very excited for it. We have very close partnerships. I have been advising and being advised, you know? So it's been a great partnership with Dr. Nadine Gab, Sue Bonatone, and Eileen Catizoni at Early Bird. So this is for the long run, and it's only a beta test because we're it. They said that they get hundreds of calls every single week, and they turn everyone down because they want to get it right, and we're helping them to get it right. And it's an absolute honor to have that role. Nora?
You're muted, Nora. Nora, you're muted.
I have a quick comment, not a question. Is that okay, Tessa, or do you just want a question? I just wanted to highlight, I also thought this was fantastic, and I'm so excited to be part of a district that's so on the forefront of such just really amazing, cutting-edge research and being able to put it into practice. And I just think it's amazing. And I wanted to comment on one thing that Deb Dixon mentioned, just kind of in passing, and just sort of highlight the importance of the social-emotional impact of early reading intervention. And we've been talking a lot, you know, Peter's mission and talking at the district level about just the importance of how kids think of themselves as learners and academic engagement and social-emotional learning and well-being. And so much of that has to do with being able to feel confident and comfortable as a student early on and not having to wait to fail in reading. Being able to catch that early and really support students is just so incredibly important. So I just wanted to say I was glad to hear you mention that, that the wait-to-fail model does a tremendous amount of damage to students. So it's amazing to see that being turned around. John?
So I also enjoyed the presentation, partly because you used my favorite thing that should be associated with all learning: fun. And so that was great. And I also was very impressed by this range of tools and interventions. So my question is about outcomes. And how confident are we that the iReady literacy assessment is a tool that, you know, we'll be able to use and hear from you about five or six years from now when we've had enough time to see students move from kindergarten, you know, into at least the middle part of elementary school and determine whether or not all of this has been successful?
Yeah. So our plan is to continue with it in the spring, again, to do it this May, and then throughout a student's career at AB. So we did administer it this year, grades one through eight. And so that would continue going forward. What's wonderful, it also has a progress monitoring piece built within it. So if a student is struggling, we can actually do retest throughout the year and not just wait until the spring in order to do that. What I love about it, and I think everyone who... We took a look at probably five different screeners this summer when we were planning on doing this. We actually accelerated our timeline because of the pandemic. We wanted to be able to get our arms around where our students began this year. What the assessment does is it actually breaks down the different components as well. So it has a phonological awareness component, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, and then two areas of comprehension. So we can really then pinpoint within the tool itself where a student might be struggling. And it also connects to the standards and identifies prerequisite skills and what a student might need. So it's a really robust tool. And I think our hope is to later on this spring be able to do a little mini-presentation for you on the tool itself. So a lot of work was done going into choosing it. I do think our educators are finding it helpful and useful. I know our principals are finding it helpful in their meetings with our teachers. And so I think going forward, it's going to be a really helpful tool for us to monitor over time how our students are doing. Who are you? Angie?
Yeah, thanks for the thorough presentation. And this is a clarification question. So is this for K-2, 6, verse to 8? Is it across every student? Is this the impact for every student? Or... And also, is that kind of based on each? It kind of individualized for each benefit for each individualized student? Because every student, the level are different. So I assume this will, you know, there's some of the best readers and there's readers that need more help. Would this benefit for across the board?
So I think I have another clarifying question. Are you talking about iReady specifically or our presentation? I'm not sure when you say this. What are you referring to?
Yeah, the scope of the change. Are we aiming at what we see there?
Yeah. So we see this impacting all students, right? So building all students, all those different skills that, you know, if you remember the Scarborough rope, all those different areas that need to come together to create really skillful readers. And so we don't want there to be a student struggling anywhere along that continuum. We need to know where they're struggling right away, and we need to be able to do that intervention. And oftentimes, what has happened in the past is that we have waited to see what happened, and now we know that we need to do that intervention earlier. So that progress monitoring all along the way will allow us to intervene when a student needs that extra support. So we do see this as supporting all of our students on that continuum. Evan?
Thank you, Tessa. So yeah, thank you all for assembling this great presentation. So as an engineer, you guys talking about the social science, but I can get the whole, the main idea, that's great. So I was really... I learned a lot, basically. So but also, I just realized, so I was told, right? From this presentation, it says there are 10 to 15% of the population actually suffers from this Daxia. So it's important, I would say, we needed to address this with this ABRSD approach, right? So yeah, I'm happy to see that. But on the other hand, now this is a kind of, so it's based on the classification. It's very subjective, right? So we first wanted to, we needed to assess, then classify who, identify who has this Daxia, right? So then we are going to say, take a lot of intensive but universal support to address that. So I just wanted to know, say, how confident? Basically, what is a false alarm rate or misclassification? What are the consequences of this? I know there's a sequence of assessment over the probably eight or seven years, many years. But I just want to... So this is a subjective thing, right? So we may have some, has a false alarm problem. So do we have any?
Yeah, it's my turn to answer that and then pass it to Dr. Krista Dulu to give a little bit more of an overview. But from my perspective, we begin at pre-K. It doesn't mean that a child has an evaluation and has a label. It's that we understand what a child may need if there are areas of deficit. We can go in there and make sure that we are filling those gaps in order to make it so that that child doesn't struggle. We had talked earlier, one of the things they talked about was the Matthew Effect and, you know, the rich get richer. And the idea is that we need to make it so that we have those students who are struggling. We've got to catch them early. Whatever we call it, doesn't matter, what we do matters. And so having the expertise and the research to back us up of what are the best practices in order to do that. But I defer to you also, Dr. Krista Dulu.
Thank you for that question. I think part of what assessment attempts to do is at first do a screen. And a screening approach means you want to cast a very wide net, use very short assessments, and just ask the question, are there some students who are exhibiting some potential risk for challenge? And capture them early, just as Sharon was describing. The diagnostic piece comes much further down the road. And the main purpose of a diagnosis is finding students who need individualized and tailored instruction delivered through special education. So one of the main benefits of getting diagnosed is getting access to special education services. But there are many steps prior to that that can really support students, give them the instruction they need. And that's part of the intention, to avoid this model where you wait for kids to fail or they spend too much time struggling, to try and find them when only the risk factors are presenting before they can then tumble into full-blown challenges that, as we heard, can sometimes extend to how they feel about themselves and their social-emotional characteristics. Very technically, though, the answer to your question around different assessments being precise in their picking up students with false positives or false negatives, that varies by assessment, and that's something that is usually included in the test descriptions. And so I'll just share, that's a very precise and wonderful question to think of at the scientific level. And each assessment usually has that information embedded in it. But to be honest, I don't know it offhand.
That's good enough. Thank you.
Adam?
Yes, thank you again for the wonderful presentation. And I'll make my question, which is more of a request, brief, which is to say, I really like the end slide here, which talks about what will look different. And I'm glad to see that we're going to have a process in place and we're going to have consistency across the district. But coming at this as a novice, and I can put myself in the position of, I'm sure, many families who are also looking at this, saying, I have no idea what this means, except I know it's going to be better. I would ask that, as we move through this, we include some way to make sure that our families are informed around what these assessments mean, what the continuum of services will be for their kids as they get identified. Because, you know, I think what we would have said is in the past, there wasn't a lot of information around this area provided to families to begin with. And so now that we've got a real depth of knowledge and resources that are available to us, we definitely need to make sure that our families understand what this all means and what it means to them practically and their students' learning journeys.
Yeah. And that can respond. Thank you for bringing that up. When Dora shared that big overview of building out the curriculum, our plan this summer, hopefully we'll be in person this summer. We can get some good curriculum work done. Our plan is to...
Our plan is to take each grade then and blow that up, so that each grade's teacher will get explicitly stated what the research is, what the components are, what the curriculum is, what assessments they're using. And then the companion to that will be a parent version as well. And so again, hand in hand, so when new comes to the district, this is curriculum, then they all need to share with their parents and their caregivers in their classroom. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Um I actually have a question, which is um that I noticed, I know that that part of the presentation is about moving things from what we have now to to what we what we can use going forward. But I do know that, I did know that the bench park assessment system was still listed as something that we would be using. And my hope, and it's less of a question, I guess, is that educators will be, I mean, that's based on balanced literacy. It's based on level books, and anyone that has a dyslexic child can tell you that they can blow through those assessments often because they're good memorizers, and it doesn't really tell much about their reading or about their struggles or about their strengths and weaknesses, other than that they're good memorizers. So um and good at context and and good at understanding what stories are supposed to sound like. So do we have a plan to either re-educate our educators on how to use that assessment differently so that it provides the kind of information that we might need, or to move to something that is more in line with the science of reading?
I didn't get to hear the very last part of that, sorry.
Um do we have a plan to either, with, I don't know what the last part you heard was, to either re-educate our educators on on how to use that assessment differently to gain the information or to know readers that m- might be doing okay on that but might really actually be struggling with reading, or to move to something different that's more in line with the science of reading?
So I think the five of us had actually talked about this before um the presentation, just in terms of that there are tools out there that we do need to um think about how we're using them. Um and I think that's also why you saw running records um as part of that, because there's some element of the running record piece of that that we do want to keep intact. So it's really about going in and figuring out which aspect of it we want to keep and use going forward. And Dr. Kristin Dulo, if you want to add anything about uh in addition to that, I know something actually very specifically we talked about beforehand in terms of different materials and usage.
I think part of what I can speak to is just my personal experience um working with educators in the district and and leadership. And one thing I noticed is that in this district, but also in so many others, teachers have been trained in specific ways, and they carry those practices with them. And what the nation, the and so many countries, uh English-speaking, um especially that I highlighted earlier, are facing is this um reckoning with the science of reading and how that requires practices that some people have been doing for many years, decades, with the best intentions to be updated. So I can just say from the experience I've had directly with um the professional development um sessions in the district, um so much of it has been um bridging the gap and helping people update conceptualizations about reading development, the ways in which readers can struggle. And um I think one of the themes that Deb highlighted before is this conceptual change approach. And so my partnership with the district has a two-way street. One is to help people be empowered with conceptual change, um to help update conceptualizations about reading difficulty in ways you would measure it and assess it and so forth, um but but also concrete actions to replace. So I just think of this big system with all these cogs. If you um replace one cog, the system won't work any better, but replacing it with something that's stronger and more efficient um is, so that's that's the approach that um um I feel I've been a part of so far.
Great, thank you. Um it looks like we have one question in the audience. Amanda?
Can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Hi, my name is Amanda Bailey, Acton resident co-chair, Acton Boxborough Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I echo Diane and Tessa's deep gratitude at this presentation tonight. I have two questions, um or statements, I guess. Uh the first is um the importance of communicating with caregivers when a child is receiving extra assistance in reading, um whether it's tier two, tier three, we've had parents discover their child was meeting with a reading specialist by volunteering in the building and seeing them in the hallway. Will there be a standard process for communicating with caregivers when a child is receiving additional help and building that conversation with them, not just sharing the curriculum approach? And the second part is around, maybe we budget for the decodable texts and purchase the decodable texts and get them in the hands of the educators so that they're not assigning the level literacy and the level readers um through epic and things like that, and undermining what they're trying to teach. Thank you.
Sure, so the answer to your first one is that's part of that consistency across the district. There are some reading specialists who do automatically send a letter home to inform families, and so we want to make sure that that is happening across the district, so that's part of that consistency across. Um the decodable texts have been purchased. Um I believe we purchased um Pliley for our reading specialist and Spire for our grade one and two teachers. And so those, I believe, they're on their way, so hopefully they won't get too caught up with it. They're on their way, the orders have been placed. And and so as soon as they're in their hands, there will be um active professional learning to how to uh use those uh decodable texts in the classroom, so. Gone their way.
Great. Thank you, thank you. It doesn't look like we have any other questions. I I really, I can't express my, how much, we do have another one. We do have another question in the audience, but I can't express enough gratitude for this presentation. I've been waiting eight years, so too late for my kids, but really, really thrilled for the direction that our um district is taking. Um it looks like we have one more question in the audience.
Hi, um, yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um yes, hi, my name's Jennifer Spitano-Gusbaro. My daughter is in eighth grade. I was very interested in this conversation as a result. Um I think it's so wonderful that you're looking for um identifying children much easier earlier. Uh my child wasn't identified till fifth grade, um and we had to do that privately in order to get that diagnosis. Um but I guess my question is, and I I may have missed something, so forgive me, but I'm trying to understand, like, what happens if a child is not making progress once you've identified them as dyslexia? So I I noticed there was an idea of internal monitors and doing I ready before and after. Um that's great of seeing what they are, but what's the approach you're gonna do if a child is going through uh a year or two years and isn't making progress? Like, is they're going to, I guess, I'm just curious, like, it's great to have the data and know what they're doing and where their area of weakness is, but how do we approach it if we're not seeing improvement?
Doran and Sharon, do you want to speak to that, or the team?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I um would interpret that as some, a child that was already receiving support um with an individualized education plan. Or a chat, is that the question, Jennifer? Would they already, that I just wasn't sure because that would be Debbie, really.
Um yes, I guess I'm just wondering, um my child is on an I A P, and it seems like there's been no improvement since fifth grade. Um and so I'm just curious, I, you know, I see the idea of having monitoring progress, but I guess I'm wondering what the step is if you do identify that a child isn't improving, like, and you're already on an I A P. Like, is the approach then to go for a small group to one-on-one, or is there any idea of what to do with those children? That it's great you've identified them, but it seems like it's just not having an improvement in what has been designed for them or what you have available for them in that grade, let's say, or that school.
So the 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 first step would be to reconvene the team, um to ask for the data a- around progress, um and perhaps a reevaluation, um a deeper dive into more diagnostic testing to look at um any progress or lack thereof, and then to look at the intervention. Um we'd want to look at the intensity of the intervention, we'd want to look at what the intervention is, um and then make adjustments from there. Um and and it perhaps we can talk offline as well.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, we have one more question in the audience, and then um I think we're gonna move on to the next topic, so Maya? A familiar face.
Hello, friends. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to thank you for all the years of work um around this. I missed the beginning of the presentation, I'm so sorry, but I I think that um I have to commend the administrators and the school committee for helping move this along. It's really important for for the district to be, I think it, I think it requires a certain amount of like bravery to be be able to look at issues that are um considered weaknesses and um a- a- and improve. So thank you to everyone who um was was willing to to do this deep dive. I also want to say that I thought that the text and the brief email that parents received about the upcoming school committee uh was really interesting and a nice tool to alert people, and that's it.
Thank you, Maya. We miss you.
I miss you guys, too.
All right, thank you, everyone, and thank you to all our presenters. Thank you for taking the time to come to school committee tonight. And um I know that that was a long presentation, but it was so worth it, and, you know, I I am so appreciative.
Thank you for the time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. It was an honor to present and share.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you all so much for everything you've done, really, like, great, great job on this.
Diane, did you have something you wanted to add? Yeah, I just, I just want to say that um you cannot, I don't want the public to walk away with with um with the idea that that this is le- less impactful than it is. This is going to impact children in every single classroom in the district. And, you know, I think the Reading League had this quote on its website that said something like, the days of intervention are over. It's really not about intervention, it's about embedding um appropriate instruction for foundational skills um into the general education setting. And this is a new day for kids who struggle to read, and I I'm just um so pleased that this is the district that's doing it. I'm sure other ones are, but it's this, it's a very comprehensive approach. And I'm really just proud to be a member of the school committee at this time. Um so thank you all for all the work that you've done, really. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we ready to move on to the next thing?
We are ready.
Are you taking the DESI regulations for structure learning?
Uh yeah, we're gonna talk about that. I I just have to pause, though, um a- and make a comment because we clearly got Zoom bombed or something like that, but the the question and answer, and I I I think and hope that we had our settings that it didn't face the public, um but certainly the committee, I think, could see the questions rolling in. Um they were some of the most heinous racist comments that I think I've ever seen um in my life. And I have to just say I am so sorry to the committee that 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 was the case. I'm hoping that that wasn't a public-facing thing, um but I would absolutely, you know, be remiss if I didn't just pause and make a comment about that and and apologize.
No, I apologize, Peter. I saw that, and there are two niggas in this, in this, in this school committee, right? Two of us, and so that was directed to Kira and I. We may be fat, we're ugly because, but this is what AB is about. And this has to go down in record. When somebody is so hateful that they can call us out and call the N word and call us fat and ugly niggas, this is wrong. When we are donating our time to this community, it's wrong, it's despicable, and nobody should be doing that. Nobody. Nobody should be doing what they're doing. This is despicable. And people need to call this out in this community. This is wrong. We have the blackness in the art of the box world, who is trying to make this place a better place for every kid? Every kid. To call us black niggas, to call us fat niggas, is wrong. It's wrong. It is wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. And this has to stop in this community. The hate in this community has to stop. There are only two niggas, me and Kira. This is wrong. This is wrong. I don't care what you say, this is wrong, and this is why we are where we are in this community. This is where we are. The mascot has been retired. Live with it. Live with it. We're done. Live with it. If you cannot respect the people of color in this community, we are here, we are here to stay. Buckle up. We are done. We are done. We are done, and he is talking, please, we're done. We're done. We are done, and I'm not gonna take this. I am not taking this anymore. I'm not taking disrespect from anybody. We are niggas, and with the guns are out. We are done. We are done. No disrespect for Kira and I. No disrespect. We are done. We are niggas, yes, we are. I'm a proud nigger. I'm a proud nigger. And this is done. I'm not taking it anymore from anybody. This place needs to change, and and Peter, I'm looking up to you and all the district uh district leaders to 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 buckle up and do the right thing. This is you, we all need to do the right thing. White, black, Asian, everybody needs to call this bullshit up. This is done. Nobody should be disrespecting it this way. Now that I'm donating my time. I know what my time is worth. I know what my time is worth. I could probably put it elsewhere, but I'm putting it here and to be, to make it better for kids in this community to get along and, probably in this community, to get along and live. And I I I am sorry that I'm breaking down, but this is not right. This is not right, and it's because the white people on this committee are not speaking up.
I love you, Evelyn. I I am, I'm grateful to make history with you on this board. Um I I want to be really clear that what happened is an act of violence. I I want that language to be just.
It is a hate crime, and it is a hate crime, and the A D needs to see this, and I'm calling every media tomorrow. Every news media needs to see that Articus Moro is a racist community. Every news media needs to come to this town and see how people like me and Kira who are donating our time in this community, again, people need to come to this town and see it. I am so fucking done. I am so done with everyone in this community. People, listen. The news media needs to come and see what is be, what is here. The A D needs to come into this community and investigate what is going on, because I am so fucking done.
Peter, is it, is it possible?
Leave me alone. I am so done. I am so done. I am so done. I am so done with what is going on.
Evelyn.
I am so done.
Evelyn.
I am so done. Somebody needs to do something about it, and I'm gonna call the A D. I'm gonna call everybody that I know.
Evelyn.
Who is going to come and see what is going on in this community, because it is wrong. It is wrong. Nobody should be Zoom bombing and calling us niggas the way they're calling us when we are trying to donate our time.
Evelyn, uh I I'm going to ask, um please, Madam Chair, um given the hateful speech that's in the Q and A that maybe you can call a a a brief recess.
Great.
Yeah, I agree. That's fine. I was trying to get there. Absolutely. So Peter, how do we do that?
Um you know, we're gonna leave this open, and if if people want to just, you know, we're gonna go into recess, you can turn off your video mute for a minute. Um and and we'll gather and, you know, let's take five minutes and then we'll come back.
Okay, so um it's eight fifty-one right now, so if everyone can just take a break, we'll come back at eight fifty-five. Yes, okay. Okay. It looks like we have almost everybody back. I think just Amy and Nora. Oh no, Yevan. Oh no, Yevan's there. Everyone moved around after we did that. Okay.
Right. So, Tessa, we have, uh you know, just to ask how you wanna do this. We do have a couple of people in the audience with hands raised.
Okay. Um. Alright, I guess we we can, oh, sure.
Okay. Andrew, you can speak.
Andrew?
Andrew, you there? And Andrew, we can't hear you, so I'm gonna go to the next person. Charlie, if you're there, you can speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to speak to Mr. Baya if it's possible.
Where am I?
Is she on? Can she hear me?
She, she can.
Yes, I can hear you. Speak up.
Hi.
Yeah?
My name is Charlie Cadlec. May I call you Evelyn?
Yes, you can.
I gather from what you said, what was written to you, I want you to know that you have every right to be upset. It's totally unacceptable. I'm glad that you were able to settle down a little bit because whoever this total idiot is who wrote this and uh if I knew they would hear from me. You by being upset, unfortunately, probably make them feel they accomplished something. I want to be rather public in saying they've accomplished the wrong thing. I hope you stay where you are and do what you have been doing. Don't let words upset you. I am not exactly young. I will not give you my life history, would not be pertinent to this. But I learned a long time ago from my very, very great parents who went through terrible things in their life to ignore words, to go by people's actions. And I want to assure you, I wish, perhaps we can sit down one-on-one and have a conversation. I'd like to get to know you better.
One minute remaining.
This is not what you just heard and whatever else was going on is not the town that I've lived in for fifty-six years, where my children were born and brought up and where I will stay. So, perhaps you will agree to meet with me sometime and we can continue this conversation. But please don't give the satisfaction to whoever wrote this for being upset. Thank you for listening to me.
You're welcome, Charlie.
We wanna try Andrew one more time, Tessa?
Sure.
Andrew, you can speak.
Thank you. Apologies. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh Charlie said it, said it best. Uh in whoever this faceless coward is that sent a chat, I know that on my side, I didn't see anything and uh they're cowards. They don't represent the town, the district, alumni. They certainly don't represent the voice of the colonials. And they don't represent, I guess, as a white person, I guess, they don't represent me. Um they are evil. They are scum. I think that all of us on this call can unite and say that that person's a coward. And we shouldn't give them the satisfaction of letting them get under our skin. Being a racist is a learned behavior. And if it's, it could be some immature fourteen-year-old, doesn't make it right. That's not effective while we're here tonight. So, thank you for giving so much of your time to help the children of Acton become educated and create one of the best school districts in the country. It's, again, going back to being proud of where I'm from. It's people like you that make our school district great and make sure that the kids that go to Acton Boxborough schools get a great education. So, thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Peter, are you, are you ready to move or?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh you know, one, uh again, just my apologies because it that was disgusting. Um and we will certainly have an opportunity to talk about that more. Um I know we do also have a lot of people here because we sent something out um around the DESI regulations. Um and I don't know of any other way than to just make an awkward transition um into that. The, I'm gonna go ahead, well, so we attended a professional development thing the other day and they, they told us not to narrate what we're doing when we're online. And I just told you I was about to share my screen, which I think will be obvious. So, I want to provide an update to the committee and to, you know, number of people who are in the audience around some new information that came out of our State Department of Education as of the fifteenth. Um and the Board of Education for the state has adopted an amendment to its um structured learning time regulations, uh which have been in effect a long time. Um but they adopted new amendments uh specific to pandemic learning. And so, I want to share those with you. I wanna talk through them. I want the committee to understand where we are now and some next steps that we're looking at. I just very briefly want to show you this slide. I won't read all of these. These were the priorities that we set as a district for our students. You know, and and I think, you know, ideas about keeping things realistic for everyone. Um thinking about the environments we're creating, supporting students' social, emotional well-being. Um and really keeping a focus on equity is a core component of our work. And also thinking about our, our students as humans and not just about unfinished teaching and learning from the street spring is really critical for us. So, um I I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight that before we started talking about time. So, just some background. Obviously, we closed our schools last March. Um and in July, we received the first draft of DESI's reopening guidance. Um and we had a few weeks to look at that. Um but DESI finalized that guidance in the beginning of August. And then about one week later, we had to submit the plan um that we developed to DESI for review and any comments. We did not receive any comments back from DESI. Um and they green-lighted our plan to move forward. And then we submitted a final draft of that plan to DESI also in August, uh which DESI then approved. We began school, obviously, in September and got through about, you know, two months of school. And then the superintendents are on state rest to complete a learning time survey for DESI. And I'll show you a little bit of that in a bit. Um and about a month later, uh we had a meeting with the commissioner uh via Zoom. And on the ninth, I believe it was, we were told that DESI was going to be proposing new learning time regulations. Um and we'll talk more about that. And then those regulations were adopted formally by the board um on the fifteenth, which was Tuesday. So, the expected implementation of the new regulations uh is required by January nineteenth, uh according to DESI. So, just to give you a little bit of background and timeline for where we are today. I want to talk about some important terms. I think some of us are very familiar with these, but as a staff member, I didn't wanna jump over and make some assumptions. But to make sure we're all on the same page, synchronous learning, and this is as defined by DESI, is learning that is directed by a teacher and that happens in real time with other students, such as during live full-class instruction. So, the key here is it's directed by a teacher happening in real time with other students and the teacher. Asynchronous learning is learning that occurs on the student's individual time and at their own pace. A new term that DESI is introducing is this idea of live instruction. And live instruction is the combination of any in-person instruction that students are getting. So, when students are with us in school, that's considered in-person instruction, plus any remote synchronous instruction. Um so, that's live instruction. In-person instruction plus remote synchronous. Structure learning time is the total of all of, all of those types of learning. So, it's the total of in-person learning time, synchronous learning time, and asynchronous learning time. All of that points toward the greater idea of structured learning time. And that is whether students are in person or working remotely. Um I provided a link to the regulations at the bottom of the presentation. If you'd like to, to read those. We know we're in a hybrid model and all our families know we're in a hybrid model. And as a district, uh we are considered in a hybrid model because that is our predominant learning model used by students. So, almost all districts have some students uh or more opting for remote learning only. That is not relevant to being considered a hybrid model. It's the mode that most of your students are working in. So, we're a hybrid district. If we close for any period of time and all of our schools are closed and that becomes the predominant learning model, then we would then be in a remote model and we would have to follow those regulations. So, while we're in a hybrid model predominantly, we have to follow hybrid regulations. If we switch to remote, we have to follow a different set of regulations. Speak to those next. As the arrow shows, we're currently in a hybrid learning model and there were two major changes that we have to meet. The first is that there is a required daily live check-in for all students. Um and so, live, you know, obviously, when kids are with us, that means the definition of live. But on the alternate days, there will be a daily live check-in required for all students. In addition, each district is required to provide thirty-five hours of live instruction for all students over a ten-day period. So, again, live instruction is the combination of in-person learning and remote synchronous learning. If at some point we switch to a remote model as the predominant model at Acton Boxborough, then we would be required to provide daily synchronous instruction for all students. And in addition, we would be required to provide forty hours of synchronous instruction for students over a ten-day period. Our remote program currently does not need to meet that model because we are considered a hybrid district. So, again, it's thirty-five hours of live instruction over ten days and a required live check-in for all students is, is the target that we have to meet. When we report to DESI, there are five categories of time. And I thought it would be helpful to give you some examples of what counts toward that time and also talk to you about whether or not that counts toward the overall structured learning time and whether it counts as live instruction. So, in-person instructional time, such as literacy, math, music class, art class, time kids are spending in morning meetings or advisories, that does count both towards structured learning time and toward live time. When kids are with us, there's also time during the day when they are not engaged in instructional work, um such as the time they're in lunch, the time they're in recess, and time that they spend in hallways passing between classes. That does not count toward in-person instructional time. Remote synchronous synchronous instructional time is very similar to what in-person instructional time is. And it's the time that students are working in real time with teachers and other students. And that counts both towards structured learning time and live instruction. Remote asynchronous instructional time is when students, again, are working at their own pace. It does count toward structured learning time. It does not count toward live instruction. And then remote non-instructional time, uh students, when they work remotely, still need to eat lunch. They need to have breaks at the elementary level. We plan in recess. That does not count for either structured learning time or live instruction. So, just to be clear about what counts and what does not. This is where we are currently as a district. Um the new regulations require thirty-five hours of hybrid live hours. Right now, our district average is thirty point five hours. There is no regulation for asynchronous time, but we are estimating that um it's about fourteen hours as a district average over the ten-day uh span. And then daily structured learning time is four point five, four or five hours. Uh it's, that is actually just four and a half hours. It's not four hours, forty-five minutes. And the new regs are at five and all, or the regulation is for five. And I'll, I'll speak to that. For grades one and four, um the total live instructional hours are roughly thirty-two. Um and the new regulation is thirty-five, so we're only about three hours off of meeting the new regulation at the elementary level. That's primarily because we have the benefit of classroom assistants who have done an amazing job at the elementary classrooms um learning new technologies. And they're actually connecting with students um on all of those remote days. So that the students, uh, at elementary class are able to have live instructional time on remote days. Asynchronous instructional hours average between grades one and four are about twelve hours over the span. And then the total synchronous learning time is about four point four hours. Um, we believe that our students at the elementary level. Were probably working for about three hours a day on asynchronous, and we're gonna be collecting some information from families to check our thinking on that. In grades seven through ten, um, the total live instructional hours was twenty-nine. We do not have classroom assistance. Um, as we do in the elementary schools, um, and teachers are teaching all day. The new regulations call for thirty-five, so that's an area where we're about six hours off of the new regulation. Total asynchronous instructional hours are higher at the secondary levels. Um, and then the total structured learning time is a daily average of about four and a half hours. This is a chart, um, and each of the lines. In this chart, vertical lines represents one district. Um, and so. I just want to show you where we stand in relation to what was reported. And I want to call out a couple of anomalies because. I, I'm not sure Desi's reporting is, um, accurate. So our estimate is we would fall about here. The thirty-five hour average that we need to get to is this blue horizontal line that I've added, uh, which I've labeled as our target. I have a couple of questions and wonders, and I have spoken with Desi directly about this, and I sent them this chart. So there are districts reporting ninety hours over ten days, eighty hours over ten days, seventy hours over ten days, and sixty hours. That would mean they're averaging six to nine hours of instructional time per day. Schools are not open that long. Um, this is data as reported by superintendents, but this data is just not possible. Um, so there has to be some kind of data error in that. I think Desi has acknowledged that. There are a couple of districts, um, that are turnaround districts, um, and are actually under governance by, by Desi. Who, that do have actually an additional hour of school. Um, as part of their turnaround plan, they do qualify at that six-hour day, um. But the rest of that, I, I just don't believe in that data. And I also have some wonders about data in this box, and hopefully you can see my mouse right here. Um, because as we have modeled our plan out, this would actually require, you know, not only elementary but secondary students. On, oops, excuse me, all of their off days to literally be on Zoom for the entire school day. And I do not believe that this many districts around the state are actually having their elementary students try to Zoom all day into a classroom. Um, I, I actually haven't heard of that. So, um, I'm struggling to understand that. And that's something I've, I've also forwarded some questions to Desi. But what I will say is I think probably the data in this range has some general accuracy to it. Um, and this is something we want to think about, um, as we move forward because we do have to, uh, implement some strategies to close some of this gap. So I'm gonna share a couple of things. I'm gonna read the notes first. Um, one, I'm gonna share a couple of ideas for illustrative purposes only. Uh, this is not supposed to be a complete list, um, and anything I share with you are simply ideas to help illustrate. Uh, we might close a gap. And we know that any idea I share has benefits. It will have drawbacks. There will be challenges to implement these mid-year. And in all honesty, some of these ideas may just not be feasible. So I don't want you to read too much into what I'm saying. I just want to try and illustrate. But we need to increase, um, our elementary. Um, in order to meet the regulation, we would need to add three hours over ten days. We could, one strategy we could implement would be to increase assistant time to Zoom with students on remote days. So we could just simply add time to the assistant schedules. I will be honest, it actually doesn't work as easily as it sounds. Um, assistants work specific hours. Um, some of them are already conducting morning meetings with students, um, and so. That would, we would have to really study that in order to figure out how it works. Um, or another possible strategy or combination of strategies could be to have students Zoom into some combination of. Either morning meetings, read alouds during the day, or afternoon check-ins. Um, I can tell you there are challenges with that as well. Um, it took our remote students, uh, quite a bit of time. To figure out how to get to classes on time. It requires a lot of parental support, particularly for younger students to. Get them into those classrooms at the right time and get them set up and make tech, make sure technology is working. So, you know, neither is a magic bullet, but those are a couple of ideas. In grades seven through twelve, there's two standards that we need to change. Um, we, as I said, we already meet the daily live check-in standard, um, for our elementary students. We do not currently for our secondary students. So one possible strategy to address that would be to have students come into the classroom via Zoom during directed studies. And potentially we would have to expand advisories at the high school to meet more frequently. Um, you know, they do meet a couple of times a week now when kids are with us, but we would have to expand that to daily activity. And kids would certainly have to be able to zoom in during that time. That would be an opportunity to meet the requirement of providing the daily live check-in. And in terms of additional time, um. You know, we could have students potentially zoom into some or all of their classes to increase the live instructional time. We could also look at lengthening the school day, reducing passing times, reducing lunchtime. Um, a, a, and I'm not saying any of these is a magic bullet. Some of these I actually would not even recommend that we pursue. Um, one challenge, uh, you know, I think an opportunity. Um, if we pursued it at the elementary level, you could have a student come in for a small portion of the day. You can't do that at the junior high or high school. You can't say that you're only gonna, you know, some students would only come to math class some days out of the week, but not all the days. You couldn't say that, you know, kids will sometimes come to ELA or English class, but not other days. Because there'd be then no continuity of instruction. So, um. It would take a lot of, um, exploration to have kids zooming into classes. Some districts are doing that, I'll be honest, at the secondary level. Um, we have not because we've had questions about the efficacy of the instruction. Um, but that is certainly something that would be a strategy to pursue. In terms of what we're planning to do next, um, we do not want to make important decisions about how we would modify our program in a vacuum. And so we have been developing a survey over the last couple of days, um, that we are intending to send out to our students. Through, you know, from fourth grade up through high school, um. Family, all of our families, uh, this does not affect pre-K, but we'll probably survey them anyway, just to get perceptions of how it's going. Uh, but all of our families, pre-K through twelve, um, and our educators, pre-K through twelve. About current experiences that they're having, as well as some of their preferences for how we might move forward. Possible outcomes that can come out of this work and the survey. Um, we may choose to add daily live check-ins for all students in grades seven through twelve to meet that part of the regulation. We could, um, one enough, excuse me, another outcome would be the addition of remote synchronous learning time. From kindergarten through twelfth grade. We could also choose to apply for a Desi waiver of the learning time requirements. Desi, um, does provide a provision in the regulation that the commissioner can grant waivers, um, to student learning time. Requirements that is based on, um, feedback that you receive from stakeholders about their preferences around the experience. Um, so, you know, the way I feel is that if our stakeholders. Um, feel like we, they want more from the experience, then we want to explore ways to give more in the experience. But if stakeholders feel like they're comfortable with the program as it is now, we want to acknowledge that now. Um, and we want to acknowledge that with Desi, and that would be a reason we might apply for a waiver. We also might very well implement some combination of outcomes. So we may very well, based on stakeholder feedback, decide that the daily live check-in. Might be a really good benefit to all of our students in grades seven through twelve. However, we might say, based on stakeholder feedback, that we don't think. That zooming into all of the classes all day long is a good and healthy thing for our secondary students. Um, so we might choose some combination of implementing some measures, applying for a waiver on other measures. There's a lot of possible outcomes that we can pursue with this. Overall timeline, this will have to happen very, very quickly. And I know, uh, we don't like things to happen very quickly. But we have a deadline for, from Desi. Um, our intention is to release surveys tomorrow. Uh, we would have to close the survey on the twenty-second. Um, we will be analyzing some of those results and sharing them with you as a committee the week we come back from, uh, vacation. Waiver requests are due to Desi at the very latest on the eleventh. However. If the waiver were to be declined, you still would have to have everything fully implemented by the nineteenth. So that is a very fast timeline, um, and it's something that we're, we're going to need to pay attention to. And get moving right away, which is the reason that we added this as kind of an emergency addition to the agenda. So with that said, I will stop sharing, pause, and have an opportunity for questions and, and comments. Heavily take some notes.
Um, I just wanted to, um, note to people in the audience that we are not using the chat feature or the Q and A feature. Especially after what just happened. So if you have a question, um, you can raise your hand. The committee's gonna have an opportunity to ask questions first. Um, and then if there is time, we will move on to the audience. Okay. So. Apologize, because I don't know who had their hand up first, but I'll do it in the order that's on here. John?
Thank you. Um, uh, Peter, that was a fantastic presentation, you know, under the gun. You know, I particularly, particularly wanted to call everybody's attention to your slide number two, which is what are we trying to do? So I'm really concerned, you know, about supporting our community. That means our educators, that means our families, that means our students. Um, and taking decisions that do that. Um, and my desire to comply with Desi requirements. You know, has never been high, um, and for people who are older, um, and remember nine ninety. You know, which was another exercise in compliance, um, not a fan. So. Um, I'm completely supportive of talking to stakeholders, and if there's some good things we can do to improve our program. That speak to the points that you raised on number two, um, or our educational objectives, I'm all for it. Let's do it. And if not, um, you know, the, eh, eh, after that's done, we can't meet these. You know, I on the seventh, if the school committee needs to vote in support of a waiver, will be wholeheartedly in favor of that. If we think that the program that we have is really the best one we can put forward.
Amy? So I have a question. Um, is there a time requirement on this live check-in? Um, but they just want you to like get on there and say, hey, everything's good and move on.
Um, no, there, the, for that aspect of it, it's, it's really about having the daily live check-in. Um, you know, in all honesty, we, we don't want to put something, I, I don't want to do anything that is just lip service. In order to try and tick the box with Desi. So if we're gonna do a live check-in, I think. You know, something that's bothered me the whole time is kids kind of being just left out on the asynchronous days. So I actually think that this could be an important point, make some connections with kids and just make sure they're seen. Um, so, uh, you know, of the regulations, this is the piece I certainly support the most because I think I can have a benefit. Um, but, you know, we don't just want to say, hi, how are you? We, we need to have some kind of meaningful connections. But I think it's an opportunity to ask kids, how are you today? Um, what's going on in your life? Is there something you're struggling with? How are your classes going? Are you having any particular challenges getting work done? Are you having particular challenges feeling connected to people? Um, helping kids connect with resources as needed. I think that, that's really the intent.
Um, so I, I completely agree with you on that. I mean, I'm angry that Desi would again push forward an unfunded mandate. Again, saying you need to do this when, um, we've already stretched our educators. Um, eh, to their limit. I'm, I'm wondering also, so I completely support a waiver and, and, um. Figuring out a way to make a check-in, um, meaningful, if, if it's possible. And I'm gonna throw out there, cause my, I only have high schoolers, so I can't speak to the junior high or elementary. Um, but the idea of using advisory for that check-in time. I don't know. I don't know if that would work, but, you know, maybe that's a, a place where, you know, you can just see how, how are you doing, kind of a thing. Waiver, totally support it.
Nora?
Um, I have a comment and a question. So, um, the comment is. I, I like the way that, um, you were just explaining that the changes we would make would also be driven by, obviously, what. Students need and what would benefit the students in the community and that idea of a check-in. On days when they are asynchronous, a meaningful check-in, um, does sound really appealing. I just wanted to say that from the, the students I know in districts that are, um, zooming into live classes. It's when I hear about that experience and what it's like for students and what it's like for teachers. I've, I've repeatedly felt so thankful that we don't do that in our district. Just because it, it does seem to just take away so much of the experience for the students who are in person and for the teachers and. Um, so if that, if that is also a sentiment shared by teachers, I, I would, um. Really hope that we're not forced in some way to go that direction. Um, and then my question was. I know that the timeline on this is just ridiculously short, but as parents are being asked to give their impressions of. What would be a good direction to go? Is there a way that teachers will be able to, um, also share what changes. They would welcome or what they feel like is needed, because I know as a parent myself, I would want to know what, what the teachers think is needed.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, we are gonna release, um, almost identical surveys. To our students in grades four through twelve. All families pre-K through twelve and all educators pre-K through twelve. Um, so we're getting really a broad range of stakeholder feedback, and that will allow us to kind of triangulate what we're seeing.
Diane?
I think Adam was before me.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. I'm just calling them in the order that they show up on my thing. It wasn't my.
Okay. So I was able to catch part of that Board of Education meeting on the fifteenth. And, you know, that, so there were a lot of like, you know, of superintendents and, you know, just heavy hitting, you know, people who, you know, know. Learn the trenches every day. And, and they made the arguments that, you know, this is more synchronous time does not necessarily equal engagement. The timing is terrible. With, uh, every district worked very hard over the summer and submitted their, their plans and now they're. It, this requires staffing changes. I mean, it's really crazy in terms of timing. And, and, and there are, Amy's right, there, there's no re- resources behind these new regulations. And then, and then someone from the Academy of Pediatrics was there. And talked about like really what the rationale was behind these regs, and it was stunning. They said that. That there is a mismatch right now between the incredible need for mental health support and the capacity to provide it. And that food insecurity, as we all know, is on the rise. And they had this whole list of homelessness, child, child abuses on the rise. Substance abuse is on the rise, depression, anxiety is on the rise. They're, they're getting more, um, and worsening cases of ADHD. The likes of which no physician has ever seen. That's the language that they're using. And so, and, and I, my impression was that, that districts had some flexibility. And how they could structure that time, kind of time on learning. Um, I, I totally agree with Amy that if, if the surveys come back, um, with a. Kind of desire for more check-ins, that they should be, shouldn't they need more of an advisory nature? Because I, I would imagine everyone around this table agrees that more time on Zoom. Does not automatically mean more engagement. So how, how are, how is the leadership thinking about like structuring that? And what are the constraints of structuring that extra time? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I think, um, a couple of thoughts from us. Um, I would. Agree with everything you said. I would have expanded a notion, and I have shared this very bluntly with, um. Desi leadership, that eh, eh, the rationale for most of this change was to improve students' mental health. Then the strategy of increasing time on Zoom is mismatched to the outcome that they want. Um, if the goal is to improve continuity of academic learning, then increasing time on Zoom certainly could help that. Um, could, and I'm not gonna guarantee that it does, but, um, it, it is not a mental health strategy. To, to zoom into classes, um, for extended periods of a day. So, uh, you know, I think eh, eh, it's just important to me. I think, you know, the biggest piece that I take away. Um, one, we need to hear from our stakeholders because our schools are here to serve our students and to serve our families. Um, but I also, and I think our leadership team feels strongly. That if we're going to make changes, we don't want to get so far out, ahead of our educators and listening to them. About how we can make sure these changes are going to work. About how we can make sure these changes are going to work um, for them and for their students. So we need to listen to, you know, our families and students about what changes can positively impact them. But then we have to take time to work with educators to make sure that what we're trying to do will really work. Um, I think, you know, what's so hard in in all of this is. By the time you get to being a principal, an assistant superintendent or superintendent, so many steps removed. From interacting with students on a daily basis, you know, we really have to make sure we resist the urge. To plan things in a vacuum that doesn't include our teacher voice. Um, because they actually see the impact of what we try to put into place. So that's the piece that why we want to reach out to teachers as well. Um, we've already been in touch with ADEA leadership, um, talking, I know, I certainly met with them and talked them through the presentation tonight. The approach I was taking, the idea of surveying people, um, and making sure that they knew and could communicate. That, you know, we really value our educators. Um, uh, this is actually a great opportunity to say. I know that there was a letter sent out from the Superintendent's Association, School Committee Association. Um, very frustrated with state leadership, particularly the governor on the issue of schools. Um, but it really had some harsh words around unions and teacher unions in particular. And, uh, you know, I know that statewide. That has certainly, you know, labor management relations have been a challenge to getting schools open. However, I have to say that at this level, we have enjoyed absolutely tremendous relationship um, with our association. Um, the leadership has been incredibly supportive and our teachers have been incredibly supportive of doing the right thing to kids. So I I want to make sure that, you know, we don't confuse some of the the statewide rhetoric or national rhetoric around what's going wrong with what we see locally. Um, our teachers have been amazing. All our staff has been amazing and our leadership has been fantastic and trying to work better. So um, sorry to take more time to say that, but I think it's an important statement to make. Um, but you next step is to listen to people and start working with people. It's just gonna have to be a lot faster than we've ever done.
Adam.
Yes, so uh, first of all, I'll echo what what Peter said about the um, great working relationship that we have with our teachers. And it gets really amazing work they've done. Uh, two things. First thing I noticed today, having a student who was remote learning all day. Who actively chose to learn in a hybrid model so that she could go to school. Um, it's a it's a big difference being in front of a Zoom all day long versus it is being in front of a Zoom for a half day on Wednesday. So I I eagerly look forward to the feedback from our community um, through the surveys. Uh, and and the second is an observation, um, similar to what Diane said around some of the justification for this. It feels like a really broad brush stroke and I'd much rather have us identify those um, students inside our population. Who are at risk and may need not just more time on Zoom, but to have um, specific interventions to make sure that they are doing well. To reach out to those people who aren't engaging and just mandating an additional five hours of of live learning time. It is not, I don't think, the right way to to um, address that issue. So, um, you know, I I too will. Will buck the regulations right next to John.
Angie.
Yeah, um, I'm so glad I'm after Adam because uh, this like a continuation. So sounds like the DESI requirement, it's the increase this one is behind the mental health. So I guess to continue Adam's question is, is there any concern in our district in regards to the mental health that's mentioned? And because I do also agree with everyone sa- saying that the uh, by increasing the zooming time doesn't necessarily. Um, make the connection. So my question is, is there any concern in our district? And whether we were um, how we are addressing that.
Can you just say that one more time? I wanna, I'm sorry, I'm my head is still spinning from earlier. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing that fully.
Yeah, so the reason sounds like from DESI for the change is behind the mental health. So is there any concern in our district in regards to the mental health?
Yeah, you know, I can actually maybe see if Dawn wants to talk to us because we've actually just spent some time over the last couple of weeks starting to pull together data. Um, and we're actually preparing a presentation for a school committee that will do. You know, the earliest we can get to it is actually early February, um, but we're gonna have our counselors and psychologists come in um. And talk about social emotional learning during the pandemic uh, with you. But Dawn, do you want to just highlight a little bit of what we think we're seeing?
Um, yeah, so, uh, you know, I I can't say at this point in time that we're seeing an increase in some of our. You know, we have a whole range of information and data that we collect. Um, one of it obviously has been our hospitalization data over time. We bring that to you usually around the budget time. Um, and share that as a data point. Um, it it's not anything greater than it has been. Um, you know, there are some students who are spending a little bit longer um, in settings than we might normally or typically see. Um, but by and large, I I almost, I I haven't done all the comparisons yet. Again, we'll we'll see you in early February and and give you more data. But um, I wouldn't say that it's it's overwhelmingly um. Uh disproportionate with where it's been in prior years. I think the challenge. Um, as I speak with our counselors and our psychologists and um, a number of our educators is. Getting students to um, engage in class and what does that mean? And so, um, and I think that engagement is showing up in different ways. It's showing up in grades. Um, it's showing up in cameras on or cameras off. And um, it's showing up in whether or not they're connecting with their classmates. And so I I would say that by and large, a much larger pool of data that we have is really the qualitative data around how students. Are able to engage um, in the classroom in remote settings on Wednesdays when we have everybody online in the morning. Um, and, you know, the students that are in person, many of whom are, you know, they just want to be back to, you know, what they call normal. So, and we do too.
Thank you. Um.
Can I actually, can I just add one thing to that? Because I I this was good anecdotal information. Sorry, Tessa. We we have a kind of a consult team around COVID nineteen and we were talking with them this morning. Um, and it includes, you know, our nurse leaders, the public health officials in both towns, and also our school physicians over at Acton Medical. Um, we were talking with one and and she shared that anecdotally, she actually treated a number of our high school students. Um, just for regular check ins and things like that, um, during the period of shutdown. Um, and universally, the high school kids were actually saying um, that they found that the remote schedule really stressful. And trying to zoom throughout the day um, to be increased stress and they really, really missed the in-person connection. Um, and so she was just stressing to us again, the importance of the in-person connection and what that means to kids.
Anecdotally, my high school students would agree with that a thousand percent and could not wait for those two weeks to be over because it was. Kind of awful at our house. So, um, Nora, and then we have two questions in the audience after that.
Um, just coming from the field of psychology, it's um, also. Similar to what Diane was saying, that in the field of psychology, I know in the APA and the MPA, there's so much discussion of the. Impact on students of sitting in front of a computer all day and what it is like for them. And there's a real emphasis on the need for lengthier breaks in between. So shorter periods of time focused on a screen with longer breaks in between. So it's less. Time on um, Zoom calls and what I guess they're calling live teaching through a computer. And there are a lot of recommendations around every forty minutes on is twenty minutes off. And um, so just wanted to highlight that, that this is really going in the opposite direction of that. Um, so it'll be. Interesting to see what, you know. What the community feels and what teachers feel. And and I'm wondering if the community and teachers come back and say what we actually need is some longer break times. So that students don't have to sneak away from their camera to get a drink of water. I hear students talking about, you know, five minutes between every hour for six hours a day or five hours a day, not from our district necessarily. But just kind of across Massachusetts and um. If they come back asking for longer breaks in between classes and that that would promote better mental health and well-being. And it takes us in the opposite direction of what Desi is asking for. What happens then?
Yeah, I actually, again, in one of my blunt comments to Desi. I shared the frustration that our remote schedules actually exceed their guideline for remote districts. And, you know, a real fear that they're gonna end up pushing hybrid districts into a remote model just to meet requirements. Now, we wouldn't do that because it's not right for kids. But, you know, I I I do worry about, you know, unintended consequences of a regulation that came into being quickly.
All right, Peter, you wanna elevate the audience members that have questions?
Sure. Megan, you can unmute and talk.
Hi, thank you. This is Megan Connor calling in and I have a second grader and a sixth grader at Blantyre School. And I just wanted to uh, reiterate um, what what Nora was mentioning. I I really truly think that um, we are going in the opposite direction of this. Um, I have a sixth grader and I'm just curious specifically for her, what the instruction would look like on the asynchronous day. Um, will the timing be earlier? Um, currently, she has assignments that are due. So I'm wondering, are the assignments going to be less because she's completely stressed out? She doesn't eat lunch at all on the days that she's home. Um, she doesn't get outside at all. Um, sometimes they, because the assignments are due so rigorously. Um, and I I think it's, I think it's wonderful that, you know, she's doing every single thing. But I'm just amazed to even think about about this possibility that there would be more Zoom time. I completely agree that we need um, to have um, some kind of an instruction. Maybe that's more because I feel like the sixth grade teachers, it's it's more giving assignments and what's happening um. For each each assignment that's due. Um, my other question is, I have a second grader and as Adam was mentioning today, you know, it was the first day where we. We were home trying to to get them on each on their calls all day long and. Um, I have full respect for the remote learners, but I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, I just wish Jesse was in my home today because. I wonder what it's like, you know, chasing them after with a computer all day, trying to get them to stay on their 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 um, computer. So anyways, I struggle with that and I'm just, my question is, you know, with the with the instruction, what will it look like? Will it be, will it even earlier in the day? Because to get in all the assignments as it is, we're going into nine o'clock at night trying to get the work done.
Yeah, and you know, I I appreciate those comments. I wish I could tell you what this looks like, but we're really just processing these new regulations. Because they just came into being. Um, so I don't have a lot of details about what things would look like. I think we need to hear from the community about kind of general thoughts on how we move forward and then be able to work with teachers and administrators about exactly how that could look. Um. You know, I think one of the important things that I I think about too is, you know, our remote families made a conscious choice. That they wanted to be fully remote. And so I think families knew that that meant, particularly for the youngest students. A very, very high level of interaction with them. But in our hybrid program, there's a good number of our kids in hybrid models that are attending childcare programs uh, during the day. Uh, whether it's with us, um, I know there's a number of pop-up programs around the community. Um, and so if we provide content-based instruction during the day for young kids or expect a lot of really rigid Zoom times. Um, I I do have a worry that it's not gonna be accessible for all of our students based on, based on what's going on at home. So. Um, just a thought, but Megan, I'm sorry, I don't have too many more details for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure. Amanda.
Thank you. This is Amanda Bailey, ABCPAC co-chair again. Um, I want to point out that the disability advocacy organizations were one of the major drivers behind this new regulation. And they are underscoring this is a minimum requirement. We have students who are struggling with all the screen time. We have some who are desperate for more interaction. So it will be good to get feedback from our community.
That would be great. And you know, Amanda, I think, you know, my goal, to be honest, would be to move more students in person. Um, because I think, you know, what we're seeing um, and hearing from our educators is that we're we're really struggling. To make sure we're being able to serve all of our students' needs in that remote environment. So I'd actually rather be spending time planning to bring more students back than to zoom more.
Thank you.
Sure. Amanda, you can speak.
Hi, my name is Amanda Tobey. My daughter is a kindergartner at McCarthy Town. And I just wanted to be sure I understood. So is kindergarten exempt from the regulation but could potentially be impacted? So if you decide to make some decisions, you might make them K through twelve. Did I read that right?
Um, you know, in all honesty, we need a little bit more information. I think any changes we make are really going to be focused grades one through twelve. Um, you know, kindergarten is a half-day program this year. Um, you know, for all of the the kindergarten students. So I I don't know how these regulations would really impact kindergarten all that.
But they're exempt. They're not, they're excluded.
No, they, I believe they count in all of our time overall. But DESI is not collecting information on every grade level either. They really targeted four grade levels in their surveys, grades one, four, seven and ten. Um, so, you know, I think that's something, uh, you know, I just. They're they're technically not exempt, but I don't think that that's that's gonna be their issue for us. They don't have to have, they actually, they do, I know they do not need the required thirty-five hours. They, there's no way because kindergarten is not a required program. So, sorry, it's late.
Right, right. Okay. That's fine. Just wanted to be sure. I I I was maybe, I was thrilled. Maybe she was gonna get thirty-five hours every two weeks. Okay, great.
Absolutely. You know, and and it's just a good opportunity to say. You know, before we leap to judgments about what we think is right for everyone, I really think we just need to listen. To to feedback from families over across the district. Um, and feedback from our students about what they think they need and what's next. Because, you know, I, we need to respond to our families' needs and we need to respond to our students' needs. So I think it's just making sure that um, we don't jump the gun too much and make make too many decisions before we hear. So, um. Let's see, trying to figure who's next. I believe.
Really?
I'm struggling with my mouse right now. Sorry, Corinne.
Hi, thank you.
Oh, you're there, Corinne?
Yes, I am.
Okay, sorry about that.
Peter, you said something that was absolute music to my ears, that you're finally starting to think about how to get kids back to school more. So earlier in the year, I I'd sent you emails asking you like what was gonna be the process. You said there would be two or three of these six-week cycles that you would evaluate. Data, you know, transmission data in the schools. The last time I asked, there had not been a single known transmission in the schools. Is that still the case? Have there been any known?
We had one that's still registered as a transmission in school.
And that was staff to staff though, right?
What's that?
That was a staff to staff. Right now, so nothing among the students. So again, I'm asking, what will it take to get these kids back to school full-time? That is, that's when you you were talking about or somebody else that your your faces have moved on my screen, so I can't remember who said it. About all of these negative impacts we're seeing on the kids with regard to their mental health is because they're not in school. We've ripped their routines away from them. When are they gonna go back to school full-time?
Sure, I can tell you, you know, we have that conversation with the public health officials weekly. Um, about kind of where we stand, their thoughts, um, because we basically review almost all of our policies with them on a weekly basis. Whether it's a quarantine policy, whether it's travel policies, um, to see if there's ways to either relax them or if we need to tighten them. Um, uh, you know, I I, to be honest with you, I'm, I would like to think that. As we start to firm up dates for vaccines, um, particularly for educators. Um, and then we also come down off the surge we're currently in. Then there's an opportunity to maybe bring bring kids back. Um, I. Can't give a date as to when that's gonna take place, but I do know at least Massachusetts has prioritized educators and vaccine. Uh, I believe that's starting in February. So, you know, my hope would be could maybe get, you know, quarter of the year, third of the year. Um, as we go toward the end, but I don't have a date for you.
Okay.
That's okay. I understand.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Lara, you can go ahead.
Hi, this is Lara. Um, I was pretty much gonna say the same thing as Corinne. I was just very happy to hear that um, there's planning and thinking about getting the kids back into school. And I have a second, a fifth and a seventh grader. None of them want more Zoom time. They want to be back in school. And that's, I think that's the best way to get more in-person instruction or more uh, instruction. From the teachers is to get the kids in school. So, and yeah, pretty much everything Corinne said. The transmission doesn't seem to be happening in school. I know there's a surge right now. But um, it's really wearing on our family for sure, all of the the lack of um, connection. With with this, especially my seventh grader. So, that was it.
No, thank you. All right, and Gary, you can go ahead.
Thank you. So I have two questions. The first is, Peter, I know you talk to your fellow superintendents in the area. What is their take on this um DESI requirements? And the second question would be, given the surveys, if the results come the way we expect, which is less Zoom, more, more in school, in health, which counteracts or goes against DESI's requirements, what's our recourse? Do we have any?
Yeah, you know, um I, I, you know, different districts are doing things differently. Um you know, I have a colleague who's the superintendent in Carlisle and, you know, their largest classes are about fifteen students. And so they have the right number of staff and the smallest classes in the state, and they actually have had their kids in fully through middle school for quite a while. There were some other districts that I talked to, um they're actually meeting the requirement for the live instruction, um because they only bring students in every other day for the morning. So kids come in for about two and a half hours in the morning, then they go home, and then they Zoom for two hours in the afternoon. And then the next day, the opposite cohort comes in for two and a half hours, then they go home and everyone Zooms together. So the kids are getting, you know, they're meeting the live hours, but they're spending less than half of the time in person than our students are. Um so it's, you know, it's just complicated. Um I think, you know, a- again, I look at that data and I, I just have some, some suspicions about what's getting reported, um at least for portions of it. But um there were, there were different ways that districts have gone about planning this. Um our highest priority was to try and have the kids in school with us for full days, uh because we thought that was good for them, you know. And I know that recess doesn't count for technically time on learning. Um but boy, if there was a time that recess ever should have counted for something as important, I can't think of a, a more appropriate time right now. And that, that's another thing that I've also shared a pretty blunt assessment with the state on. Um our recourse in all of this, you know, you know, if stakeholder feedback comes back significantly positive to maintaining the program that we have or adding check-ins or something, you know, minor, then, you know, we can apply for a waiver to the commissioner. Um and in all honesty, from what I understand, is districts that try to take a couple of steps, um like, for example, um adding in the daily live check-ins or secondary things to make some progress toward it, but then also show strong community support for current planning. I don't think those are the districts that, you know, are likely to be, you know, hung out to dry by DESI. I really think their main focus, I think, A, a main focus of DESI right now is on districts that haven't gone back to school and continue to be in fully remote environments when their conditions are actually safe to be in school. Um and on districts where the community really is frustrated by the educational program that's happening in schools. So um I, I, I think if the feedback was strongly in favor of a waiver um or maintaining kind of the hybrid model that we have with some small modifications, I think we would be okay.
Can I just follow up on one comment? Peter, my, my worry wasn't going for the waiver. It was if the waivers turned down was my concern.
Um, you know, uh uh that's an interesting one. Um I've asked that question and I just got an answer saying, well, it's a requirement. Um you know, I, I'll be honest, our first graders are not meeting the nine hundred and ninety hours a year. Um we did not give, the expectation DESI had is first graders should have five hours worth of work on their remote days. Um they called me and said, you know, we noticed your first graders are low. You're not assigning the five hours of daily instructional time. And I asked if it was appropriate and, and, you know, I, I really didn't get a response. Um because first graders can't work for five hours independently um at home. So, you know, I, I they haven't pulled my license yet. I'm hoping they don't. Um it is a requirement. Um I, I think if we had really strong community support, I think we'd be fine. And I, I really don't worry too much about that.
Thank you.
Sure. And Jennifer?
Um yes, I have a fourth grader. I have an eighth grader and I'm also a teaching assistant at one of the elementary schools. And I just want to comment that I do feel there's kind of a missed opportunity to get some of those hours on the asynchronous days. Um currently with my fourth graders, I'm slotted for originally on half an hour, but they have so many questions and they're so excited to be on that we go more like forty-five minutes to an hour. Um it's broken up with a morning meeting kind of situation and a check-in in the afternoon. They don't need the check-in in the afternoon academically, but they come back every day. Um one of my cohorts, the others, it's like fifty percent, mostly because parents have made other plans um in the afternoon. But they, we, what we do is I figure out some kind of educational game or fun game, and then they're excited to come and they have that kind of engagement. And I know there's a logistical issue and I know there's a difficulty with shortage of some assistant teachers in some of the schools. Um but I really think if we don't get a waiver, that's a really an opportunity that can be missed. Uh my son, for being in fourth grade, um he basically is done in his work in thirty minutes. Um you know, I, so I just feel like there, there would be a way, even if it's just you're on with them and you introduce a assignment that would have been asynchronous and you stay online with them for any questions and then you move on to the next. I just, um I think there's an opportunity there. And I think that a lot of parents are a little frustrated that there's not more like um learning there. Um but I also realize there's a lot worth putting on teachers, so I say that all with a caveat. Um and then I feel like um in the middle school that there, one of the things I'm hearing most from parents is the lack of consistency um from having that daily schedule. And so their teenagers are all up and down with the time they go to bed and the time they wake up. And parents are having a, a really a great difficulty with that. Um and if there was a way to, if you do have to add it, to add it into the morning, so the kids were having to log in at the same time every day, we could get part of that, that rhythm back. And I think that helps the mental health if you want to target that because it affects their sleep cycle. Um and I just, another comment about the mental health issue and looking at hospitalizations. Um I think that's a, you know, definitely one measure, but what we're seeing a lot developmentally um from talking to a lot of parents in the middle school age is that we're, we're watching our kids. And some of those kids are now in therapy and some of those kids are now on medication. They're not being hospitalized, but there, I am seeing an uptick. And a lot of parents, even if their kids aren't, are neither on therapy or hospitalizations, our parents are watching them very closely and very worried. Um so those are just my comments. Thank you for the time. I appreciate all your doing.
Great, thank you. Jessie, you're on, you. Yeah, thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. It, so we're almost two hours behind our schedule, so I think it's time to look at the agenda and decide what's not happening this week because um we still have an executive session.
Yeah. So the, the good news is school calendar, we already took off the agenda.
Right, yeah.
Um so that, that's gone. Um you know, consent agenda, the theory is that that goes quickly.
Yep, I, I gotcha. It's the next page that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, uh we could certainly postpone the superintendent goals if you want. Um it's really a memo. There was no additional presentation with it. Um.
Um I definitely think, uh unless anyone has a, I, I'm happy to do the operating protocols if we're gonna just vote and there's not gonna be like lengthy discussion, but knowing our committee, that's like not really what you're doing.
Can I make a suggestion to postpone those to the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Amy, what's up?
I just wanted to say, I think it'd be a good idea to postpone the um the goals. I, I don't, I don't see that it needs to be absolutely right now. And we all know Peter's working on these things anyway. Um and I, I think it, I think it, 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 it is important enough that we should give it the time that it deserves. And postponing it is, I would, I would say that's, let's do that.
Okay.
Um so I, I would suggest we do the consent agenda now and the budget update is just a memo. And if anyone had questions, they can ask Dave, but there's no presentation from Dave.
Okay, John, do you have a question?
I, I just wanted to comment that as you're trying to figure out how to do these additional agenda items, um because it feels like there's gonna be a lot of stuff, I would be a fan of saying, let's add another meeting and not try and run from some really long meetings to try and cover it all.
Got it. Okay, so the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda don't usually require discussion or approved with one vote unless any member would like to hold an item for discussion. I'm gonna read each item name and if any member wants it held, please say hold. Uh number one is approval of the meeting minutes from twelve uh from December third. The second is the approval of ten thousand dollar COVID nineteen emergency grant from the AB United Way to the Community Education Extended Day Program. And the third is an approval of donation from the Littleton, Littleton Electric Light and Water Departments in Blanchard Memorial School for Technology Equipment.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Yeah, second with gratitude.
Is there any questions, discussion? Nope, okay, great. We will vote then. And I'm gonna close it so I can see. Okay, I will call you in order. Adam?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yevan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Kira?
Yes, with gratitude.
Nora?
Yes, with gratitude.
Amy?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes, with gratitude.
And myself, yes, with gratitude. Thank you so much. Okay. We will skip our operating protocols. We will skip Peter's superintendent goals. Dave, you wanna give us a very quick budget update?
And as Peter said, you have a memo which does, was not going to have a presentation. So if you have any questions about the memo, I can answer them. I can tell you just a couple of uh addenda that, that have happened. In the first paragraph where I talk about, um um there, there was a, an item in the state budget that was going to provide some more funding. That item was vetoed by the governor and we're waiting whether the uh legislature, legislature overrides it. I want to point out that this week, the town of Boxborough approved the district's request for CARES Act funding. That's a good thing. So we'll be, we'll be utilizing some of Boxborough's allocation when we're talking with acting and don't anticipate any problems there. Uh AB Food Services received a grant from the state that was five million set aside for food programs. AB's share is fifteen thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars, not a game changer, but it's not bad. And the federal government still is working on more COVID relief. I'm sure you see that in the news on a daily basis. There is a big allocation set aside for K-12 education, so stay tuned and, and hopefully we'll have something to report on that.
Great. Thanks, Dave. That was very brief. Good job. All right, um Adam, I assume that you don't have much to say about budget.
Dave had us covered. We discussed our current budget status, our COVID relief funds, and our budget planning for next year.
And we're meeting on one, so.
Yep.
All right, uh capital improvement? John or Yevan, is there anything? I don't know why that's on.
Say a few words on behalf of John.
Sure.
So uh we met, uh the subcommittee met on uh December tenth. Uh so overall, the, most of the CIP project went as planned. Uh however, the subcommittee suggested comparative study of the utility cost and the increased capital cost with other districts, highlighting AB's effort to reduce the utility cost. Budget-wise, so current CIP budget in uh in the next two fiscal years was see four hundred thousand less every year. Uh this will drain the capital stabilization fund within three years. And so we, the subcommittee uh require, recognize the importance of making consistency, consistent the capital investment over time. So would like to better understand the pros and the cons of reducing the CIP budget in the next two years by thirty percent and uh and then increase, dramatically increase the capital investment thereafter. So committee, subcommittee recommend rethinking the operating budget uh capital allocation in the next two years so that the budget is more consistent in the long run and avoiding draining the stabilization fund. So then JD will circulate the Excel spreadsheet uh so, so that the subcommittee can better support uh have better uh discussion and the budget development. So that's all.
Great, thank you, Yevan. Um I don't have anyone else listed, any other subcommittees as part of my thing, so if there's, if there's no one else, then I'll move on to the next thing.
A hand raised, it's intended.
Okay, we'll do that before you do the warrants.
Sure. All right, you can speak.
Hi, um this is Emily Richmond and I have three kids in the acting schools. Um and I'm really not sure, this isn't necessarily the right moment in your meeting. Um but I just want to point out as a citizen watching that what happened earlier um in the meeting was appalling. And I would love if, before the close of this meeting at some point, um if the members of the school committee, the members of um our community who are present would stand up um against it as a collective group and, and make a statement. And I, I know that is an enormous ask of you right now um with everything else going on, but I am appalled at um what I gather was, was written for, for in particular Evelyn and Kira to see. And I think that if our children are watching, one of the best things we can do for them um and for the future, um and for the women who are volunteering for our town is to, to make a statement and to say that we denounce what happened. Um thank you.
Yes, Amy.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a statement right now. That was disgusting. It, it, and the, the reaction that I heard from Evelyn was not only what would happen right now on the Zoom, but a, a repeated, constant struggle that she has faced, you know, over a long period of time. So this is, this is, yes, this is one incident and it's just absolutely repulsive and disgusting. This is one more thing that Evelyn and Kira and other people in our community are dealing with. And stop pretending like that there, this town doesn't have racist issues. We do. We have some really serious racial issues. So stop pretending like we don't. Let's step back, take a look at it, and deal with it. And Evelyn, I hope to God you and Kira are willing to stay on. I mean, I don't blame you if you're like done with this, like you just want out of here. I, I hope to God that you would, that you could, you would stay. Because you both mean so much to me personally as a friend and also just your voice. Um that's all.
I agree. I think that, um you know, we, we were all thrown for a loop earlier. I, I know I'm reeling still. I think Peter's reeling still and, you know, as I, as I mentioned, we are, are two hours behind where, where we intended to be in that meeting. And I'm, I'm not saying that it, for any reason, that we, we should, we should speak about what we need to speak about. I'm not saying it for that reason. I'm saying that I, I am just, you know, at a loss. And this is what we've been saying all along and, you know, there is much talk about what was in my texts and things that I've said and about me being, you know, predetermined around the mascot issue, but the truth is that there is racism here. And it was, it was brought up by the mascot issue. Not to say that people that, that defend the mascot are necessarily racist, but it brought out the racist intentions of some in our community. And that is the truth. And it is evidenced by the fact that we have to keep talking about this. Um you know, no one, no one here can know what Evelyn has experienced in the years that she has lived here and maybe elsewhere. And no one can stand in her shoes in that way, but we can stand in support of her, of Kira, of other people of color in our district, on our town committees, boards, in our community, in our schools, and, and say that we're not gonna stand for this anymore and that we're gonna continue to push forward policies that address these issues. Nora, did you have something to say?
Yes, I think that um we're all reeling from that. And I think that um when, when any member of our community is, is attacked with hatred, um it's really an attack on, on all of us um together. And we do stand united um in And we do stand united in, in, in pain at those emotions that were expressed. And I think that we are working hard and we're on the right path. And there will be people who are angry when power is shifted. And we're doing the right thing and, you know, we're all doing it together. And of course, you know, it's a painful thing and, and I'm glad that the caller, I'm sorry, that I'm blinking on the name called in to, to ask us to speak because I think that we're all, we're all in our heads right now just thinking about our own personal response to that. And it brings back a lot of emotion from responses that we got previously in dealing with the colonial mascot question and just how difficult it is to see that those sentiments can be expressed locally. And we heard a lot of it on the, the national stage as well. And we'll just draw together and keep making our steps in the direction that we know is the right, the right way to go.
John?
I was very glad that Evelyn spoke up because it, it, it's, it's so important that, you know, people see, have evidence that says we really have a problem. And, you know, in that sense, you know, I'm also glad that we had a hundred people in the audience, all of whom, you know, could share, you know, this terrible experience and say, we really have a problem. And, you know, the other thing that we see from time to time and, and that Peter and the staff deal with is things really do happen, you know, in our middle school and in our high school that reflect that we have a problem. So people don't always have the, you know, experience of being there to see exactly what happened. And so sometimes think, well, that couldn't really be that serious. Well, it really could be that serious. And, and I hope that, you know, for all of the pain that, you know, this event caused, as Charlie said, you know, hopefully the takeaway is the positive one, that it means that everyone can redouble their efforts knowing that, you know, we're working on a significant progress in, problem and we have, you know, significant work to do.
Adam?
Well, I'm, I'm wholly unprepared to comment on this, but I, I got, first of all, I, I have to thank both Kira and Evelyn because if you guys were not here, the, the important voice that you bring to this committee would be missing. And so first of all, I, I really appreciate the time and effort that you put in here. And I can only, I can't even imagine what these, what these attacks must feel like for you. And I have the, the deepest empathy for you. And I'm at a loss for words, but just know that I'm super grateful that you two are committed and participating in our activities.
We do have a hand raised in the audience. Here, do you have something to say?
I just, I, I was saying before Evelyn that it's, it's, it's an honor to make history with you on this board. I am the first black woman, maybe the first black person, I've worked with the Historical Society on this, ever elected in Acton Town History. And that matters. And it's an honor. And even in the hurtful moments, I'm, I'm grateful to be here and I'm reminded that it's hard to be first. But it's powerful to be first. And I am not afraid to be here. And I will not go away. And I am, it is an honor to serve.
Thank you, Kira. Now we're all gonna be crying at the end of the meeting. All right, there's one person in, in the audience that has their hand raised.
You can speak. Okay, nope.
All right.
I muted.
Diane? Yeah, no, Diane? I just want to briefly say, I was just reminded of the speech by Teddy Roosevelt, the Daring Greatly speech that became so popular with, you know, certain authors. Anyway, I just want to say that, you know, it's, it's not the critic who counts. They're not the ones in the arena doing the work. Evelyn is, Kira is, John, Amy, you are Tessa, Yevan, Angie, Amy, Nora, Jenny and me. We are in the arena, this very public arena, getting our hands dirty and doing the work. And it's not the critic who counts and I want Kira and Evelyn to remember that. We are with you.
Okay.
Adam, you ready to read warrants?
Yeah, I would be happy to move that the school committee vote to approve payroll warrants as follows. Number P two, one, one, two, dated twelve, three, twenty, twenty, in the amount of two million, six hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred four, seventy-four cents. And payroll deduction warrant as follows. Number two, one, dash, zero, one, two, PR, dated twelve, three, twenty, twenty, in the amount of five hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars, seventy-seven cents. And vendor warrant number twenty-one, dash, zero, one, two, dated twelve, ten, twenty, twenty, in the amount of one million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Oh, do we have to vote, do a vote? I don't even remember. I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
Evelyn, yes, yes, yes.
Adam?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yevan? Angie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Kira?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And one final thing before we adjourn to our executive session, which I'll read in one second, is I just want to say that this, echo what Diane said, and this is hard for all of us, but this is not hard for me because of the color of my skin. And that is the racist part that we need to remember about all of this. This is, this is hard. I have pride over school committee, I don't know how many times in the last couple of weeks, because this is hard. This is a lot of work. It's a lot of headspace. It's a lot of other things. And it becomes even harder when I worry about committee members, you know, feeling the way that they felt tonight. Because this is not how anyone who is giving up their time, their free time to do this, this is not how anyone should feel. And as Diane said, we are the ones who are in the arena. We are the ones who are elected to do this work, to get our hands dirty and to be the targets of, of members of our community who are dissatisfied with what is going on. And sometimes that's warranted and many times it's not. And this is hard, hard work for, for all of us, but it's even harder for those of us who aren't white. And so I just really appreciate you, Kira and Evelyn, and I know that I asked you both to do this hard work. And that is hard for me sometimes because I see the pain that is putting you in to be in the spotlight. And I am honored to sit here on this, on this committee with you and know that I stand behind you every step of the way. Okay, we have need for an executive session tonight. I will entertain a motion for an executive session to be convened under MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, Purpose Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Is there a motion to enter executive session with no intention of returning to open meeting?
So moved.
Great, we'll do a roll call vote. Adam?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yevan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Kira?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And thank you to everyone who attended our meeting tonight. It was nice to have so many people involved. You were sent an individual link, to an additional link to attend the, the executive session. So, and we'll see you all there.
Yeah, I sent, just remember it's the calendar invite that I sent that has the executive session link. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for those who attended.